Recording in progress.
Which one is he doing right now?
The General Government Foster and Foster.
Do we have that?
You should have.
The gentleman is in, uh.
Chicago.
Chicago.
Yes.
With his family.
Is he? Hi, Jason.
I'm here.
Oh, what are you doing?
So this is Jason Franken, I'm from Foster and Foster. He's going to be presenting the General Government Actuarial Evaluation.
Thank you so much, sir. Whenever you are ready, uh, the floor, the spotlight, everything is on you.
Okay, um, I, I apologize for not being able to be there in, in person this year, um, but I, I, I did, uh, you know, if you, if you look at flip to page five of the actuarial evaluation, you know, overall, I would say that was a very, you know, uneventful year for the most part um, for the employees retirement system. There is, as you can see on, on page five, an increase to the contribution of around two hundred thousand dollars this year, um, that, you know, overall, the experience, you know, was that there were, there were actuarial losses, but they weren't severe actuarial losses. The, the biggest reason for the increase to the contribution is because of the, the pay. Uh, there was substantial pay increases, and this is, you know, this third year in a row where we've seen a pretty high salary increase, which lead higher liabilities. And, and so on page five, you'll notice that there's a two hundred thousand dollar increase to the contribution requirement, but as a percentage of payroll, it, it's only about a half a percent. And that, you know, demonstrates that, that the payroll did go up significantly during the year. And when you have, you know, higher payroll, that leads to, to higher pensions. So most of the increase this year is attributable to those, those salary increases. On page, uh, on, on page seven, you know, just to, to reiterate, if you look at the total projected annual payroll last year was, you know, six point six six million, this year it's, it's seven point one four. So, you know, a, a, again, a, a substantial increase to the, the payroll, which is driving the, the higher contribution requirement this year.
If I may, if I may, if I may ask you a question, I, I know you're giving us the detail of this, but I also want you to explain the severity of this. I don't want to just give, I just want to, I don't want to just read through this. I, I want to hear your feedback on this as well.
Yeah, yeah, um, okay, uh, well, I'll, I'll, I'll keep going and, and make, try to make sure that I address all of your questions along the way. Um, so the, you'll notice in section B here, the, the assets, we have two asset values, the actuarial va- value, that's the five-year smooth asset value, and then we have the market value. You, you'll see that there are, that our actuarial value is a little bit higher this year than, than our, our market value. Um, and that's, uh, again, based on our five-year smoothing, you know, there's, there's gains and losses that are recognized over time. Uh, but at the end of the day, you know, there's not a, a significant difference here. So there, there's, you know, I, I don't think any, any need for a, a alarm here. We, uh, on a smooth basis, we earned seven, just over seven percent, which is our assumption. So it was a very, you know, it's been a very solid few years in, in terms of the investment returns. Um, let's flip to page eight. If we look at our unfunded liability, uh, you'll see that last year it's sixteen point one, and this year it's seventeen point three. The, those salary increases did contribute, um, to that, you know, that, that's the vast majority of it um, is, is due to those increases in, in, in the salaries, which, which increased the liabilities higher than what we were expecting. But at the end of the day, uh, the, the funded ratio did take a little bit of a hit, but, but not a severe hit. I mean, it went from seventy two point seven percent down to seventy one point seven percent. So like I said, at the end of the day, you, you know, the, the, the experience was, was unfavorable, meaning that our, that it didn't quite live up to our expectations, um, mostly because of the salary increases, but we're not, you know, it wasn't a, you know, a, a, a big hit, you know, there's not anything, you know, that's currently in the pipeline that has me concerned that our, our funded ratio is going to continue to, to go down. Um, so like I said, you know, it, it's a pretty uneventful year for, for this plan because, you know, the, there's, there's not a whole lot that, that's actually going on. Um, and page ten, you know, th- this shows the the development of the contribution requirements. You'll see that there are, there's a few components to, to our contribution. You have the normal cost. That's the value of the benefits that are being earned by the active employees. And, you know, that increased by about forty six thousand. You know, the administrative expenses currently, we are not, uh, making any, uh, contributions toward those expenses, and, and that's something that, you know, we'll discuss changing, you know, going forward, uh, to make sure that any expenses that are paid from the plan are replenished. Um, and then you have the, the big, the big driver of the contribution. That's the amortization of your unfunded liability. About twenty nine percent of our liability at this point is not covered by, uh, assets, so we have to make payments to pay that down. Currently, we're at a seventeen-year amortization, excuse me, for, you know, for those payments. And, you know, thi- this year, because of the increased unfunded liability, we have an increased amortization payment. And, and so that, uh, again, is, is approximately two-thirds of the contribution is try, is, is eliminating the unfunded liability. Only one-third of it is covering ben- current benefits that are being earned by active employees.
And, and we still have seventeen years, you said?
Yes, there's still seventeen, seventeen years. Yep, yep. And, you know, just for your reference, the, we use the level percentage of payroll approach. So that's one point four million dollar contribution i- is, is based on the level percentage of payroll approach. And we, you know, what, so what that means is that, that fourteen, or that, sorry, that point four million dollar, uh, contribution, uh, the amortization payment, which is part of the contribution, is designed to increase by three and a half percent per year. And, and so for the next seventeen years, you know, if there were no additional gains or losses, we would continue to see that payment go up by three and a half percent per year. So there is.
Continue to increase unless we find ways to tackle that, you're saying?
Yeah, and, you know, if, for example, if the market was, you know, getting ten percent per year, you would eliminate your unfunded liability, eliminate, you know, a greater por- portion of your unfunded liability, and those payments wouldn't go up by three and a half percent because, you know, that, that's, that's assume that there's no, no gains. Um, but, but yes, all things being equal, your contribution requirement is designed to increase over time based on the approach that, that's being used.
I mean, and, and how do you? Yeah, it's tough.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, yeah, the, you know, like I said, with the level percentage of payroll approach, your, your design, it's designed to sort of increase as your payroll increases. So it, it sort of mimics, mimics, you know, the increase in, in your payroll. And, and, and so it, it is a, a gradual increase to that, that number. So it makes it, it makes it difficult for the contribution to actually go down unless you have really good experience, you know, in the, in the plan.
Like how, you know, like, what do you do in that situation when inflation is up, the cost of living is up, everything is up? So, I mean, like, your payroll's gonna go up, I mean, over time, and, and I'm sure it's gonna go up a lot more in the next seventeen years, you know? I, I don't see myself in seventeen years, but if I am, like, that number is gonna be astronomical, especially with the three percent increase of each year.
Yeah, yeah, yep, you, you're, you're right. I mean, it, it is, you know, based on the, the method that's being used, and that method is common amongst, amongst plans a- across the country, there is escalation built into the, you know, the, the actual dollar amounts. So from a budgetary perspective, you know, I think you can count on your contribution requirement, you know, increasing, you know, by a certain percentage e- each year. And, and two-thirds of it, two-thirds of your contribution is going up by three and a half percent. You know, grant, you know, it, it, it doesn't always work out that way because you could get positive experience to eat into that number, but that's, you know, how the funding policy is currently set up.
Thank you. Any questions, any numbers? Thank you, you can continue.
Okay, okay, on, on page eleven, you know, the, I, I want to focus on section I. We just have a, a few years of experience here, and the I one shows you how salaries have increased. In the far-right column, we, we're assuming about four percent increases, but each of the last three years, there have been double-digit increases to the, um, to, to the salaries. And that, you, you know, as you mentioned, inflation, you know, might, might have played a, a role in those larger-than-expected increases, but those larger increases ha- has created additional liability over the last few years.
And I ask you, does that have to do anything with, like, could it be because of, um, overtime?
Yes, that very well could be, that may be.
Or is it, is it strictly because of, or is it strictly because of, like, the, the raises that were offered?
See, the, I, I believe that we have the definition of salary. I, you know, most times it, it is, um, a function of both of those. It, it's, it's this, you know, it depends on your, your definition of pay. You know, some, some plans just say base pay, uh, mo- but most are based on, on total pay. And, and so if it's just base pay, you know, overtime, you know, that's pensionable, overtime wouldn't a, a, apply. But in, in the vast majority of, it is total pay, and so it's not only those annual increases, but it is, uh, expected, our, uh, overtime that would increase that as well.
Thank you. Yes. Make sure your mic is on, buddy.
You know, the word salary, is that just a base pay, no matter if they're hourly or salary? And, um, is this figure what, you know, if, say if it's just salary, what, and a, and a person makes eighty-five thousand, is that without any overtime? Is this based on their base salary or their base pay, or?
I, it depends on their contract. So like, some have a limited amount of overtime that's rolled in, some have no overtime, some has longevity rolled in, so it all depends in, on the contract. So you have hmm, seven different, or six different contracts that you're working under for the general. No, this isn't police and fire. Yeah, so anything general.
So this, these, these numbers are what?
So overtime is only rolled in for clerical and DPW, um, a hundred hours of one year. Okay?
Yeah.
The supervisor is two hundred hours of one year of their last three years of working. It's not like police and fire where everything is rolled in, including all their overtime and everything they make. So.
Yeah, so, you know, you're, th- this particular plan is a li- little bit unique, um, because of the fact that there's different groups, and there's definite, different definitions of, of salary for, for each group. So, you know, I, I guess to her, her point, you know, there is limited amount, there is a limited amount of, uh, overtime that's included for, for this plan. It sounds like for the police and fire plan, that might be a di- different story. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, kind of. So th- these numbers are what, what, the result of the, at the end of the year, and it wasn't what was budgeted, it was what was actually paid out or, or at the end of the year.
Okay, y- y- yeah, yep, we use actual data as of the end of the year.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And, and, and like I said, we apply the provisions for each group based on the amount of overtime that can be included.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so back on pa- page eleven, you know, the, the, those larger increases have led to, you know, uh, additional liability over the last few years. From an asset perspective, you can see that this year we earned about seven point one percent on a smooth basis. That's five year for, you know, five and a half and five point six three. You know, the, you, you see those numbers, and you might think that they seem low. Um, it's really be, they're being dragged down by the fact that negative, the, the, of the twenty twenty-two was a, a very poor year. Um, and, and so as we smoo- we, we didn't recognize that huge loss immediately. We recognized it twenty percent per year, and as we do that, it is dragging down our, uh, our return. So we're, we've been in that five and a half to seven percent range over the last three years. And our assumption is seven percent. So, you know, we're in line with it this year. We have had a, a minor losses the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Okay, um, then on, on page sixteen, and this is more for your reference. I, I previously mentioned that the funded ratio was seventy one point seven percent, and if you look on this page, you'll see it's seventy point nine percent. Uh, this is a disclosure requirement, uh, by the state. Um, it's the P A Public Act two oh two reporting. We are required to disclose the funded ratio at a uniform, using a uniform set of assumptions. So we use the same assumptions for, for everybody. There's just some, you know, a couple minor differences in the assumptions that we're using versus what the state requires. So we do have a, a slightly lower, uh, funded ratio. You know, s- some plans have, you know, fairly significant difference because of the, the investment return assumption. That's not the case here. We're, we're all, we're within a percent, but I did want to point out this page in case you see that, and one are wondering what the difference, uh, between the two, the two po- the two ratios is. Okay, on, if you flip ahead to page twenty-eight.
I got, can you, can you explain something to me real quick?
Yep, go ahead.
I'm looking at page seventeen, and we're going to the recommended employee contribution, okay?
Okay, yep.
And if we, if we go back to two thousand and six, we're seeing six hundred and forty-seven thousand. Right?
Yep.
On the far right. We look here at twenty seventeen, I mean, we're, we're kind of a six forty-seven, we see eight thirty-one, we see seven eighty-one in two thousand and eight, then we see a drop in two thousand and twelve, back down to five ninety-four, five eighty-seven, but then you kind of go up a little bit. And, and in two thousand and I mean, you see your biggest, aside, okay, so can you tell me what happened here? Was this after the whole, um, breakdown, meltdown that happened across the country after two thousand and eight?
Y- yeah, yes, so the, you know, uh, initially it was at that, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar range. Then we had the tw- tw- two thousand, you know, the Great Recession in twenty oh eight and twenty oh nine, and you'll see that the contribution was going up fairly significantly. Um, you know, then it does go down. I, I, I wasn't working the plan, you know, back then, but I, I think, you know, one thing that, that, that happened, I, I'm, I'm pretty certain, is that the amortization period was extended. And it was extended, I be- I believe, to around thirty years. And there could be assumption changes that, that occurred as well, but, you know, effectively, because we're at a seventeen-year amortization now, and, you know, so thirteen years ago, it would have been at, at, at thirty years. And, and so what I, I think occurred, um, and, and again, I would have to, you know, go back and, you know, through Sandy's old files to, to make sure of it, but I think the amortization period, whatever it was at, you know, twenty-ten, was extended from, let's say, fifteen years, sixteen years, to thirty years at that point. And, and so effectively, that you refinanced that, the unfunded liability, and there was, you know, it was, it was unfunded liability at that point, but th- there was some that was gonna be, you know, coming down the road because of the smoothing and, and the market losses that were occurring. And, and so rather than seeing a huge increase, the amortization period was extended, so you refinanced it from a, you know, like a, 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 a thirty-year mortgage to, or fifteen-year mortgage to a thirty-year mortgage. And so when you do that, you, your payment was, you know, came down considerably. But as, as I mentioned, when, when you went to thirty years, you know, you have that three and a half percent that three and a half percent, uh, increase built in, and plus you were, you know, had some losses that you were starting to recognize from, you know, the, the Great Recession, and, and that, that contributed to some of the, the increases o- over time. You know, there was another pretty big jump a, a couple of years ago, and, and I, I think that was a result of the experience study that we did, where we reviewed all of the assumptions and said, you know, you know, some of these assumptions, you know, aren't, aren't realistic anymore. The experience has been The experience has been different than what's being shown here, we need to make some changes. And when we made those changes and implemented uh the new assumptions, there there was a, you know, you know, a fairly. You know, significant increase to the contribution requirement, and so assumptions are are obviously a very important part of this. And a big driver of of what happens to the contribution ea- each each year, so like I said, a lot of those big changes. If, you know, they they can be related to the experience, but it also can be related to methods. The amortization period and the assumptions that are being used.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and and same subject, you know, from uh two thousand and six to two thousand and sixteen, ten years. It went up less than fifty percent, and then the next nine years, it went up over a hundred percent. I mean, I I know you're explaining the different things, but. I mean, how can it, how can it survive for ten years? Most six to sixteen with no problems and then having to jump up one hundred percent in these nine years. That then, that's such a big increase from those years to these years, is there, is there a a main reason? I mean, is there one reason why it's doing that, or is it a like a?
Well, like I said, a a lot of it is the amortization of your unfunded liability. You know, that you were not paying, you you know, you were do using a thirty year mortgage. And the payments that were being produced, you know, weren't, you know, weren't large enough to cover the interest on the unfunded liability. So you end up with what's called negative amortization, meaning you you make a payment. But your unfunded liability is is still increasing, e- even, you know, because of the length of your amortization period. And 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 so some of it, you know, a big part of it has to do with with that. Is is you were, you had an a a really long amortization period. And the payments you were making weren't sufficient, it was, you know, s- sort of like. You you know, an extreme example is paying your minimum, paying the minimum on your credit card balance. You're making the payment, but your balance continues to increase, over time, that's gonna snowball. And and before long, you're gonna end up with payments that are 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 much larger. And you know, that's, you know, sort of what was going on here, is that your amortization period was 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 long, you were deferring payments. And as we've got to a more reasonable amortization period. You know, it it, there's been, you know, some, a fair amount of escalation in that. Bottom line number that that needs to be uh contributed.
Are there, are there steps in place now to keep this from happening in the future? I mean, are we monitoring the closer or?
Yeah, I mean, I talked with the board, you know, re- the pension board recently, you know, the about. You know, the amortization period and where that needs to be, and you know, effectively what I've told them is. You you know, you don't want a twenty five or thirty year amortization period, that just leads to trouble. And 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 so I I think the ideal, uh, the the sweet spot is probably somewhere in the ten to fifteen year period. You know, having, you know, you don't, you don't want it to be too short either, because if you have a five year amortization, it can lead lead to. Pretty extreme volatility, so getting somewhere in that ten to fifteen year period. Where you're making progress on on your unfunded liability and and paying it down. You know, is is ultimately, I think, where you need to be, and and as I mentioned, you're in seventeen years now. You know, I keep on, you know, getting getting shorter, at least for the next couple of years. And then have a bigger conversation on what we think, you know, the uh amortization period needs to look like. Once we, once we get it with, you know, somewhere in that sweet spot.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, then the la- the last page I want to talk about is page twenty eight. This is the calculation of the smooth asset value. And in the table in the middle of the page, I I think, you know, says a lot, this shows the. The gain or loss relative to our seven percent assumption each year, so you see this year, six thirty twenty four. Um, there was a two point eight million dollar gain, meaning that we. The the plan earned fourteen point seven percent, so it's earned nearly three million dollars more. Than what we were expecting, so that two point eight million dollars, we recognized twenty percent of it immediately. And the remaining two point three million dollars is deferred until future years. And you can see we we recognized five hundred and seventy thousand dollars of that gain each year for the next four years. Same thing last year, there was a small, a nine hundred thousand dollar gain. Where, you know, we've recognized forty percent of it, we still have five point, or fif- five hundred and twenty one thousand dollars left to recognize. Uh, meanwhile, you know, twenty twenty two, that that was the big year we we. Earned nine point seven million dollars lot less than what we were expecting, that the fund didn't lose nine point seven. And we were expecting a seven percent return, we got, you know, we lost money, but, you know, nine point seven million dollars less. You know, than what we were expecting, um, and and so we've recognized sixty percent of that, we got three point nine million dollars left. Um, so, you know, this shows the the history over the last, you know, five years. At the end of the day, you know, we we have a six hundred and seventy thousand dollars un- unrecognized loss in the plan. You know, that's, you know, pretty, pretty small potatoes, really, you know, sometimes that number can be a a pretty, you know, pretty big. Loss and and when it's, you know, it's a, it's a big loss that that has, that concerns me. On what the contribution looks like going forward, in in your case, you know, it it's relatively small. And, you know, I I don't, at least where we sit today, um, you know, this, it, the unrecognized loss doesn't concern me. But, you know, obviously, it changes from year to year depending on what happens wi- with the market. But at, like I said, at the end of the day, you know, there's nothing here, there's no, there's no unrecognized loss that that has me. Uh, concerned about what's gonna happen going forward.
Thank you, that's important to hear, like, and you know, especially when when you're saying that you don't have any concerns. Uh, that that actually brings a little bit of light to this council. So I I appreciate you and this time, I'm gonna open up the comments from council members. Uh, and I will start with opening it up to you guys.
Council chair, I mean, we just got this.
Yeah, I know.
Minutes ago, and there's a lot to cover on this, I'm I'm, I've been trying to digest it. Oh, okay, wasn't there, I'm sorry, I guess we had it last week, they're back up.
Yeah, she, they backed, they emailed, she also emailed it to us.
Okay, I didn't see, I I didn't see that in email, I'm sorry, but, you know, uh, I didn't, I didn't.
I think like three weeks ago.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I I called Lori on this also, um, I'll come check on this, and her and I actually reviewed it, and I had a couple of discussions, I had some questions. Uh, and she was very helpful on it, not to say that, maybe they didn't get it, I don't know, but I just.
Yeah, I'm, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't, I I didn't see it in the email, I might have overlooked it, but I I didn't think of it, so, I mean. You know, and sometimes when we get reports like this, we have, uh, you know, um, a summary at the end. You know, explaining, you know, uh, causes and maybe what what we, what was recommended. Is that something that we should look into, I mean, what? What is the, you know, the the severity or the importance, I know it's important, but of of this. State and this packet here with our budget and our, you know, our our annual fiscal assurability.
This is looking at the general fund basically saying, I mean, it's up to you, do you wanna answer him? Yeah, I would have to have you speak at the, at the mic. This is the general fund, this is basically uh saying that, you know, obviously, we've given enough raises in the fund. Which is obviously giving you an actuary report regarding the pension, and the pension has went up significantly, which Lori is.
So I am in close contact with Plant Moran, made sure that they had the numbers that was, it's included in the budget. Currently for the next fiscal year.
That's, that's one of my, you know, with the, some of the races in the. Contract negotiations have coming up, I mean, is this something, a tool that we would use, or is our, is that already figured in?
No, nope, this is only current data, they can't, it's not, you know, it's. Goes by what they're currently making and they kind of project out, they have formulas and everything like that. They assume a three point five percent increase every year, so when you have fifteen percent. Then your contribution is gonna go up. And also your unfunded liability that you're paying from the past.
Were you, have you been asked to give any kind of actuary on?
No.
Coming contracts?
Um, they just finally asked for something for police and fire on the current TA, they're starting to work on that. That's, we haven't had anything in. Um, it's not something that can be done overnight, so depends on what they need and if we need more information from the city.
And Lori, if I could, could, ju- just to, you know, I I talked about, you know, on page ten, you know, there's the normal cost. You know, on on page twelve, just to give you an idea, we we have it broken down a a little bit, um, by by group. By water and 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 others, and it it shows the normal cost as a percentage of payroll. And and so the normal cost is twelve point eight percent of payroll, so what that means is that for every dollar. You know, a member is, you know, an active is paid, they are earning twelve point eight cents. Of pension benefit, and and so, you know, that alone can, you know, help guide you. As you're, as you're thinking about, okay, if I give a hundred thousand dollars of of pay increases. What's that gonna do to my my pension? Well, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna go, it's my pension contribution is gonna go up. You know, at least, at least by about twelve point eight percent, and that's assuming that this is, you know, doesn't affect past. Uh, service, but but that can get be, you know, a a guide to help you understand what the impact. On your pension plan is, you know, from a, once you factor in the amortization payment, the the, uh, you know, total. It's thirty three point eight percent of of pay, um, but like I said, two thirds of that is attributable to to past. Service and, you know, so I I generally, I don't think about the amortization piece when I'm thinking about what. You know, what's the cost if I'm gonna hire, hire someone new.
Alright, thank you, thanks.
Is that it?
Council chair? And we can expect with our police and fire, as their raise kicks in and the more money they make. That, eh, but as wages go up, the fund should become more healthy, correct? Assuming healthcare costs go down and so forth.
Well, the he- health, so, I I I mean, I guess I can't, you know. Wage is increasing, I I don't necessarily think. You can't draw any conclusions about what that's gonna do to the health of of your plan. Um, you know, with wages increases, when when wages increase, it, you know, effectively increases your contribution requirements. So, you know, the health of the plan is gonna be dictated more based on the experience of of the plan. As well as the the contributions that that are going, that that go into the plan. If, you know, all of a sudden you had a bunch of money, you know, sitting around and you wanted to. Put that in the pension fund, well, then that would have a a positive impact on on the plan. But just looking at salaries alone and and, you know, I I don't think that you can make the conclusion that. Raise it, you know, increasing salaries are gonna help the the ste- future funded status of the plan.
And as our employee numbers stay up, the more participants in the plan, the more stable the plan, correct?
Yeah, I I think the the, I I think that's a fair comment, if you just think about social security. You know, when, um, you know, thirty, forty years ago, you know, I'm just making numbers up here, I don't have them in front of me. But, you know, there were two people, two active people working that were paying into the plan. And one person drawing, drawing benefits, well, now it it might have flipped, it's now you have one person working. Paying in, you you have two people that that are drawing, you know, drawing benefits. So it it's, it's, you know, that's one of the risk factors is the, it it's more the relationship between the actives and your retirees. Uh, but but having a a stable, ongoing active population or increasing, you know, can definitely help help the fund going forward.
Alright, thank you. I'll open this up now to public comments. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to our next uh actuary report review. Alright, thank you. Thank you, sir, I appreciate you coming out here, um, and I and I thank you for taking the time to be here with us, I know. With us, but this year you couldn't make it, hopefully we'll see you next year, sir. Thank you, and can you actually do me a favor, if you don't mind, can you actually email, or unless it's on here? You could just send an email to the council members in case some of them have any questions, they can email you.
I can send it to you.
Or or Lori can.
I can, I can take care of that, yeah.
Thank you so much, sir. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. Okay, so next, we are doing police and fire, so we have Francois Peters from G R S.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Francois Peters, I'm a senior consultant and actuary at Gabriel Rhodes Button Company. Um, and I'm here tonight to present the results and what happened this year. With the City of Germanite's Police and Fire Retirement System, um, the result is as of July one, twenty twenty five. Meaning this is the results for the fiscal year starting July one, twenty twenty five through June thirty, twenty twenty six. Um, the data that we used for this valuation is data that we received from the retirement office and the city. It's based on member data, um, that's your active members, your retirees, your inactive members and your drop members. But that is the membership as of June thirty, twenty twenty four, so. Couple of months from now, we'll collect data again for the next valuation as of June thirty, twenty twenty five. We also received the tran- uh transactions that happened, um, with the retirement system, contributions that were made, benefit payments that were paid out. Um, for the period July one, twenty three through June thirty, twenty four. As well as the market value at June thirty, twenty four, and we then projected all of that forward to July one, twenty twenty five. Um, everything that Jason mentioned with the general employee retirement system holds true of this valuation, uh, we all follow all the same. Um, methods and techniques in calculating your contribution requirement. Benefits is slightly different, amortization period is slightly different, um, and numbers are slightly different. But the same principle, jargon, same concept, terminology, everything holds. Also, um, we are not the investor of your assets, uh, we do not receive contributions. You've got a different service provider, you um invest your 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 money, um, into the, into the um stock markets. And wherever they invest the money, we calculate liabilities based on the data that we receive. And then we subtract that assets from the liabilities to calculate the contribution requirement. Okay, saying all of that, um, let's look at page A two. On this page, we've got the contribution requirement that we presented last year for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty four. And then we also show you the, what we present, uh, present this year, July one, twenty twenty five. Um, number of active members stayed fairly stable, uh, we did have some members that terminated and retired. But they were, um, there were some new hires that caused that the population stayed stable. What did change quite a lot, though, is the payroll, um, pretty much the same as what Jason had on the general employee retirement system. We had on the police and fire retirement system. Your projected payroll uh increased by about two million dollars since last year. Um, we had, um, overtime is included in this plan, and I.
Do you have the breakdown between, separation between overtime and?
I don't, and I do, we we do not get that information from the city, we only get a total salary uh per member from the city. But what we do is, once we collect the the member data each year, uh, we we look at it and we look for outliers. And what we found this year is that quite a lot of members had quite, quite high pay, pay increases. Um, I think there were one member who earned more than a hundred thousand dollars in overtime. Um, added all of that up, your payroll is up by about two million dollars.
I I I wanna be clear that one employee that raised had over a hundred thousand dollars in overtime, because nobody was working. So it led to this individual having to put in a lot more hours.
Exactly, yeah. Um, one, one of the functions though with that is that that overtime pay is going to be used in his calculation of his retirement benefit. Um, where the, he's going to have an additional hundred thousand dollars. That is going to calculate the benefit for him. That benefit is going to be paid for thirty, forty years, so that one member is going to get pretty. A, a, a very high, uh, retirement benefit.
Because you take the three, the, the, the three of the best three years or something?
You take the three of the best year out of his total career.
Wow.
Um, you, like, social security is the, your thirty five consecutive years. So you might have high years, you might have low years, and that averages out. For the police and fire retirement system, you get the best three years out of your total career. So you might have a high year and a couple of low years and another high year. Those high years count. Um, and that's why the liabilities increased so much in the plan this year. Um, and then paying off that liabilities, uh, it increased your unfunded liabilities.
Councilor, the question. You, you said thirty to forty year payout, you mean more like twenty to thirty. For the thirty to forty of the, the participant being retired?
Yeah, I mean, if, 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 i- if the member retires at forty five and he lives till like eighty five, which is.
That's a, supposedly retires at fifty, and he lives another twenty years. But anyway, go ahead, go ahead, you, you could talk right in the microphone.
Thanks, sorry.
Where everybody can hear.
So on page A two, we've got your contribution requirement, last year was five point nine six nine million dollars. It increased to eight point one four seven million dollars this year. An increase of about two point two million dollars. Um. If we turn to page A five. Um, on page A five, we've got the estimated market rates of return over the last ten years. Um, I want to focus on the last five years just to show you how volatile the markets were. In twenty twenty, the market rate of return was zero point six four percent negative. In twenty twenty one, there was a thirty four point zero six percent. Twenty twenty two, minus seventeen. And then in twenty three, eleven percent, and in twenty twenty four, twelve point five eight. One of the objectives of the retirement system is to calculate as stable as possible contribution requirements. Um, so as Jason explained, um, one of his final points. Was that we calculate what we call a funding value of asset. Where we phasing gains above your, um, assumed rate of return. Over a period of years and losses below your assumed creative return over a period of years. So if you turn back to page A four. If you look under the twenty twenty five column, um. Line, line number E one. Your market investment income for twenty twenty five was, uh, twenty three million dollars.
Wow.
Um, in order to break even and earn your seven percent assumed rate of return. We needed to earn thirteen and a half million dollar. Um, and the difference of that is nine point four million dollars. That nine point four million dollars is not going to be used immediately. But we're going to use twenty percent this year, twenty percent next year, and so forth till the last one point. Nine million dollars have been used in twenty twenty nine. Um, we add thi- this year's one point nine million dollars to last year's one point one million dollars. But then in twenty twenty one, twenty two, we had that big loss of ten point one eight million dollars.
So you have to make up for those.
So that is making up for those, you'll see that, uh, twenty, 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 twenty one, the nine million dollars, um, underneath the ten point one eight loss. Um, there's that nine million dollars that also makes up for it. Um, if you add the five numbers together, you get negative eight hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. That is the loss that we, um, phased in that we recognized this year. So investments didn't lose money this year. But because of the way that we smoothing assets, we are, um, s- phasing in a small loss. Yeah.
Me.
Okay.
Any questions? Loss of less than a million, so loss of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Eight thirty seven four four.
Yeah, and, and that, eh, that increased your contribution requirement by about eighty thousand dollars. So your investment. Investments that ye- this year did not have a very big impact on why your contributions increased.
And do you know offhand how many, uh, members are in the drop?
This year there were five.
Five?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, if we, if we turn to page A six, um, on this page, we've got what we call our derivation of our. Actuarial gains or loss. If you look at line number ten, the total loss for the plan this year was eleven point eight million dollars. Of that eleven point eight, eight hundred and thirty seven thousand loss was due to your investments. Leaving a lo- a loss of about eleven million dollars due to your liabilities. And pretty much a hundred percent of that loss were due to pay increases being higher than what we expect. Now, as Jason mentioned earlier, we do make provision for the fact that pays are increasing each year. When we do our projections of each person's career, we do assume pays are going to increase. But we do not assume pays are going to increase by twenty percent. And that's what we saw this year, on average, the, the group's pay increased by twenty percent. Okay. We turn to page A twelve, um. Comment one, we saw that the contribution increased from five point nine six nine million dollars. To eight point one four seven million dollars.
This is A twelve?
A twelve, yeah. Um, the top two items, the higher employer normal cost and the pay increases, that's what pretty much drove that increase of three point two million dollars. Phasing off your, on, your prior year's unfavorable investment performance had a very slight increase. And then we also. Performed what we, performed what we call a experience study. Where we looked whether the decrement rates that we use as our assumptions is still in line with the actual experience of the plan. And that changed very slightly as well. Um, if you turn to page B five. On this year, we, on this page, we've got a three year summary of your active population. Twenty twenty three, we had a hundred and six active members, um, payroll of about nine point seven million dollars and an average pay of ninety one. Uh, thousand two hundred and sixty four. Then when we look at twenty twenty four, we had a hundred and five members, payroll eleven and a half million dollars. And average about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, so that's an increase of about twenty percent. When we turn the page to page B six, on this page, we've got the number of active members, uh, inactive members, sorry. This year we've got ten inactive members, these are members that, uh, put in some service with the city. They terminated, they went somewhere else. But they've got enough service to eventually come back and get a benefit from the city once they are, um, old enough. On page B seven, um, we've got the number of people in the drop, um, there's five people this year.
That's five people that. Total that are in the drop in the police department, or that's five, uh, people that retired?
No, these are five people that's currently in the drop where they, where they, um. Work, work, they still actively work for the city, but they're not accruing benefits anymore. So they're in the drop and money is being paid into their drop accounts and not to them, um, specifically.
Thank you.
Um. And then on page B eight, we've got your retirees and beneficiaries, um, at June thirty, twenty twenty four. There were two hundred and fifty nine members receiving a annual, uh, a monthly benefit. From this, uh, from the system. Out of that two hundred and fifty nine members, I would as- assume, uh, a fairly decent, uh. Percentage of that are members that were in the drop previously. But we do not, we do not carry that number. And that's all I had prepared to say, um, but I can take your questions, um, if you have any.
I also had just some questions that I, I believe Lori and I had some conversation on this. And, you know. What's alarming. Here is. You know, you saying that we take the three of the best three years of your entire career. So like. Somebody in the end of their career, the last three years might come out and, or in, in the beginning of their year, work all this overtime, which is great. And then can potentially just, you know, buy their five years, put their money in a drop. And, and you're going to use those three best years while you're collecting five percent on your pension.
Yeah, I think, um, your system, the, the police and fire retirement system is, is very unusual in that definition. Um, normally the definition that we see is best three out of ten, out of the last ten. Or best three out of the last consecutive four or something like that. We do not normally see the best three out of forever. Um, and I believe that change was made in two ta- in the contract negotiations, maybe in two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve. Um, before that, it had a much more, um. Reasonable, uh, definition of your, uh, final average compensation. But that is what was negotiated and that was, um, that is what they've got now, is the best three out, out of, out of their whole career. And with the, with that is normally what we see is. People at the end of their career do work overtime and they do, um, earn higher pays. Eh, so to get, eh, so as to get the higher final average compensation. But we do not see that from members who just joined or have been working for one or two years. In your plan, we are seeing that, the people that are getting these. Very high overtime are members with not a lot of service. And that is going to ca- carry on with them, that, that high pace is going to carry on with them for the rest of their career. Um, also, speaking with Lori, um, the understanding is that twenty twenty five, um, is not going to be any. Payrolls are, payroll are not going to be any lower. Because I believe, um, you still have quite a lot of overtime. And then I believe for twenty twenty six, the fire depart- department is looking at hiring members in the next year. So the twenty twenty six payroll might be lower, but not the police payroll.
And the issue isn't so much the pay, the issue becomes so much the overtime. Because the overtime is giving you the time and the half, which is pumping the salary, which is giving you your best of, of X amount of years, but. You can give them the raise, everybody was at eighty, ninety or a hundred, when you're having almost everybody at two hundred.
Yeah.
That's what's hurting you the most, am I right?
Yeah.
Can you, it's called spiking.
Yeah, and also when, um, wh- when, when we looked at this, we looked at the pace that, um, happened through the first eight months of this current year. And that's what we saw, is that there are some members that's already at a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars with four months to go.
So the difference with police and fire is all of their overtime is rolled into their pension. Their value, and so when they calculate it, it's not just limited to a hundred hours or, you know, fifty hours of one year, it's their whole. Year, so if they have, you know, fifteen thousand hours of overtime, that would be included.
That could be negotiated away.
That's all negotiated in the contract. Everything that they make is rolled into their benefit calculation currently.
Okay, thank you.
So every payout, everything.
It could be negotiated like the, the best out of the past ten years.
Yep, yep, it used to, I believe it used to be that way, but it has changed. Like Francois said, like two thousand ten or something.
Okay. And even if we did that, I mean, the last three years with overtime, because. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's probably not going to help you with your current population, but it might help with future new hires.
Thank you. Any other questions from any council members? All right, anyone from the audience? Hi, Francois, I want to thank you so much for coming here for this presentation, we appreciate you.
You'll have to ask.
How you doing, sir? You state your name, the city resident, and the seat that you love.
Zohair Abdallah, three, five, four, Rosemary. Um, those numbers are very disturbing to me as resident. This has been negotiated and nothing against the police or fire, I would like to award if we can. That we cannot continue letting a police officer make two thousand dollars overtime in two weeks. In two weeks, one police officer made nineteen hundred ninety eight dollars in two weeks overtime. This going, especially his high ranking officer. Those people who make four and five thousand dollars every two weeks. When you give him two thousand dollars on top of that and time of retirement, this is going to be big liability on the taxpayers. Plus the five percent. In twenty eleven, I stood here against it, and I'm still against it today, not because I don't want to give the police and the fire. More money, but we cannot. When they invest their money on their own, be responsible for bad investment they made. They have to take the risk and the benef- benefit, when they made thirty seven percent two years ago. They didn't give back to the city a penny. But when they lose, he said they lost one million dollars this year, roughly. Roughly, now, can you explain, are we going to replace that? Million dollars total, or are we going to give him the difference between what they earned, let's say hypothetically, three percent? Are we going to replace the two percent? On what they lost or on the whole investment? If it is on the whole in the investment, you guys looking at at least four to five million dollars, you have to give the police and fire. If it is only on the one million dollars, probably around fifty thousand dollars. You need to clarify these things because you're responsible. For those number, and I urge you. To change the charter and to have a say in the negotiations. At the end of the day, when the mayor screwed up on some things when he hired people illegally. He had to give away so many things so they can drop the lawsuits against him. So please have that gentleman right there speed up the process to review the charter. So it's not dragged until he leaves to wherever he wants to go. This is our money, if one year they lose, let's say ten percent. And we're responsible for five percent. That means four to five million dollars. Can the police and fire accept when the city is in bad shape one year? And they lose money and we lose revenue, that they put more burden on the taxpayers to pay that five percent? I think they should be fair to us like we are fair to them. We love them, we give them everything possible, we approve everything for them, but they have. To go two ways a street, not one way. So please pay attention to those numbers, read the contract, because this contract, it's not fair to the residents. We have to make sure that we can afford to pay this money. Not just numbers comes in and Mr. Francois, you know, tells us. I know he's a great guy in what he does, but it is your duty and please pay attention to that.
Thank you. This is on, on the actuary report. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none? I'm going to move it over to a quick two minute reset until we start over our next city council. Thank you, Mr. Francois.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
While Jason was being conveyed to the hospital, members of the Detroit, I'm sorry, Dearborn Heights Special Response Team arrived, developed a plan, and aggressed to the shooter who was still engaging officers with gunfire. That team was able to put their countless hours of training to use and were able to end the threat. Credit should be given to Mark Myers for ending the threat, that threat. Jason was thirty-one years old and had a son, Cameron Anthony Mikowski, who was three years, three years of age at the time of his death. Jason had served eleven years. Jason had an unmatched intellect and drive. There is no question he had a promising career ahead of him before a gunman cut his life short. He was a brilliant and driven man who no doubt would have been our captain, deputy chief, or even chief at this point. When Jason set out to do something, he educated himself on the subject and accomplished it with one hundred percent effort and meticulous attention to detail. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, a small group of current and retired Dearborn Heights officers, twentieth district court staff, and Jason's closest family and friends celebrated his life at his grave at Saint Hedwig's Cemetery in attendance for his son Cameron, Cameron's mother Carrie, and Jason's best friend Tony. Those who grew up with Jason along with his blue family from the police department and court shared fond stories of Jason with Cameron. Jason's best friend Tony was able to track down Jason's first gun that was given to Jason by his father Frank. That gun, a Glock seventeen, was given to Cameron in memory of his father. Sergeant Suggs was able to gather his entire shift for an impromptu procession to Jason's gravesite to pay respects to Jason and to gather Cameron, show Cameron how important and loved his father was. Cameron was very grateful for this display of love in memory of his father. Many survivor of family members of fallen law enforcement officers, their main complaint in their fallen heroes department forgets about them. All their accounts are the same. The department was good to them for a few years and then things trailed off and the context stopped. We cannot forget the officers who gave the ultimate sacrifice to protect their citizens and their brothers and sisters in blue. There are many current and former city employees who are also will never forget Jason Mikowski, and they make an effort to celebrate his life. We need to make sure all employees and citizens of the city of Dearborn Heights know this story, know his bravery, and know his sacrifice. Jason Anthony Mikowski, end of watch, May twenty-fifth, two thousand six, father, hero, protector, warrior in fire. His life mattered. And as each of you travel and patrol to drive by Charles Worth and Ashley and reflect that a hero grew up there. As you drive Norborn, north of Ann Arbor Trail, take the time to remember that a father gave his life to protect the citizens of Dearborn Heights. Jason was laid to rest at Saint Hedwig Cemetery. He is with his mother Marilyn in a mausoleum at the Ford Road entrance. He is on your left, just after the entrance before the traditional gravesite starts. Tell his story, keep his memory alive.
Thank you so much. We are going to do a moment of silence for Jason and his family.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And I always mess up the names, so I'm not going to, but one of the rooms at the police department is named after another fallen officer.
Nowaday.
Okay, and I do have just Patrolman Robert Nowaday was killed driving during a high-speed pursuit when his patrol car skidded off the roadway and struck a tree on Warren Road near Silvery Lane. And his end of, he was badge number thirty-seven, and his end of watch was August twenty-second of nineteen sixty-six.
Thank you so much. You know, we see this, I mean, we're seeing this day in, day out. A lot of our officers across the country risking their lives, and the truth be told, this is not an easy job. I mean, it's not job on the, physically on these officers, mentally on these officers. With the growing crime rates, like, we need to be as supportive as we can, our brave men and women, both in police and in the fire department. And so, you know, my heart really goes out for them. I know that we'll be able to have some of these comments from council members, so I'll save my comments for them. Next up here, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have Councilman Lonsaludus in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up is the Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of May twenty-three, twenty twenty-five as submitted.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April twenty-two, twenty twenty-five as outlined in four A.
Second, all right, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Let's do that again. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is four B, minutes of the special meeting of April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the special meeting of April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five as outlined in four B.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Let's join the eyes, please. Next up, we have four C, minutes of the special meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty-five as outlined in four C.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Number five is public hearing and public comments. This is going to be open up for the first two minutes here. I ask you to please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Good evening.
Time's up.
Good evening, my name is Hassan Bazey, I live on Sheeham. Please, Miss, the Councilman Chair, if I go a few seconds above, allow me, I meant to call you, but it didn't work, so. I mean, there's a lot I want to talk about, but there is one thing, especially at this time, it might not be important to some people, but it is very important to all of us and the majority, which is our safety. I don't want to talk tonight about the signs all over the city on every corner. I really don't want to talk about the garbage cans, how they throw them in the street on the garbage day, the cars parked in the streets. I don't want to talk about this right now. I don't want to talk about the grass and all the mess that going on in the city. I really don't want to talk, I don't wash my car in Dearborn Heights anymore, unfortunately, because every project takes two, three, four, six months, one year sometimes, and I'm ready to challenge anybody who wants me with this. I'm not going to talk about all of this mess here. Hopefully, the next administration, and when the election comes and the next people elected to the city council, will start to see what, how miserable we are in Dearborn Heights. I had a meeting today in neighboring city. Okay, you know, I drove beautiful. The streets are clean, nice, people drive slowly. It's unreal how this city went down. I mean, hopefully, the next mayor, whoever it's going to be, and the next city council, and the next administration, and even the people working in the city, they work from their heart. That's a shame, you know? I was talking with my friend here, Mr. Fakure, about maybe leaving, or I can go buy better house. I'm not going to leave, our kids, our friends, our, I mean, you guys like family to us, so that should come into a stop. I want to talk about the safety. The summer is too short here. Sunday, Saturday, I was in front of my house, about ten kids, I have cameras and all that stuff, and I seen going all over the city. I live behind the old Montessori school, I hear the donuts at night, you know? A guy came the first time, he was driving a hundred miles per hour, you know? We called the police. The guy came, long story short, I looked at him, I mean, what these officers going through, it's not right. You just said, how, how, how hard is a job? I felt like I shouldn't call about something like this. But then, another car came, I posted on Facebook, this idiot, whoever it is, he was driving with the noise when, you know what? I reached out to the police department. I know in Dearborn, they impound the cars. Why don't we do that?
That's the administration on there.
What, what do you mean?
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, this is, I'm telling you, I know you hear sometimes from people, and then they go set, they come next time. I give them a lot of credit, you know, they come every other week to the meetings, you know? We should have, I mean, it means it's not in place, that should stop this car, impound it, take it away, let them suffer, you know? Go after the, the, the parents. It's not right. I mean, we, outside, the kids were playing, now we park the cars on the streets. We don't park them in the driveway. Try to have the, the, the traffic slow down a little bit, but they don't care. I mean, I, I urge you, please, impounding the cars, give tickets. Let's do it. I mean, I give a credit for that. I know we're short on police officers. Hopefully, we'll get back to the right number that we need, traffic unit. I mean, I'd like to ask the chief, or you through the, you know, the chief, do we have a traffic unit in the city of Dearborn Heights?
We do not.
I mean, what do we have in Dearborn Heights here? We have a good people, people care for the city. And, no, 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 I mean, we, sometimes, a little bit emotional, it was terrible Saturday. I mean, we asked our kids with the grandkids to play outside. I mean, all what we do, just keep watching, because don't cross, don't do this, don't do that. Why don't we have, why can't we impound the cars at the, the officers? Do we have the, the authority, do they have the authority to do that?
I mean, obviously, that's a question on the police chief. I do believe we have the means. I don't know if we have the, the, the traffic in the neighborhoods and to be in a hundred and eighty square miles, regardless of how many officers we hire, but I do believe that there needs to be more enforcement of traffic and, and really, Dearborn is an example, they're impounding anybody that's considered as reckless, rolling a stop sign is considered reckless driving.
Can we impa, do they have the authority to impound the cars?
They have every right, and every, based on their discretion, yes.
They have the right.
They have the discretion, they do, based on their discretion.
I mean, overall, I just want to vent a little bit, just want to thank you for what you guys do all the time. Hopefully, I don't know, it's too late now, but good luck for the next year for all of us, thank you.
Council Chair.
Yes, Chair.
You know, for several meetings, I've stated that we, you know, why don't we have the highest fines and the highest penalties in the country? There's nothing stopping us from doing that. We could tomorrow have the highest fines of any city in the country, or we could have the highest penalties in any city. And why we don't do it, and I've been saying it for a long time, I don't, I don't know why. I mean, you know, even if we get fully staffed, which is, which is asked for in our budget, each police officer is responsible for one thousand two hundred people. That's fully staffed. And that's outrageous. I mean, if something ever happened, you know, not say it happened, but if there was a, you know, some kind of thing going on, each police officer, I got to take care, I got to, I got to stop one thousand two hundred people. It's impossible. I mean, a hundred officers would be understaffed. You know, we, we need to come up with some kind of money. I know the police department is our biggest part of our budget, at seventeen million dollars, but you got to look at what you get for it. I mean, the best police department, it's possible to have the best police department in the country if we really put our minds to it, got all the graphs that are out there, you know, all the funniness available, and things like this, it happens at my house all the time, people running stop signs, and it, it's just, they're not, they're not afraid. When I was a kid, or I was a younger person, it was the biggest, scariest thing to roll a stop sign. And now, it's like a privilege they, they have, it's, it's their honor to run a stop sign, go right through them, if kids are there, everything. And I'll jump on the street, I'll look at them, and they'll go through the next one, and then the next one, just to taunt me. It's ridiculous, and I, I, Hassan, I, I sympathize with you, because I'm sure everyone here has witnessed this scenario around their houses, and we got to do something about it.
Thank you, Council Chair. Well, let's, let's hear from the council members. We're going to have our moments to have our public comment. How you doing, ma'am? You have two minutes, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Sue Kaminsky, Amboy, Dearborn Heights. I wasn't going to speak until Mr. Hassan Bazey spoke. Friday, Amboy Street, probably six o'clock, I'm not sure of the time, we hear a loud boom. My husband thought I was putting gas in the lawnmower and then it blew up. It was a car racing down Amboy, who hit a parked car, who pushed the parked car one whole house length and up onto the curb. I think both cars are totaled. And until we start taking these cars away from these kids, they're not going to care about a ticket. They whip out their money from their large wallets and it doesn't impact them. We have to do what Dearborn's doing, we have to get the parents involved, we have to hold them responsible, and we have to get these cars impounded. The car that was hit was a young girl who goes to college, you know? She's going to have to fight this out for how long? And now she has no transportation. Besides the fact, it was a Friday afternoon, kids are outside playing, and this car was flying down the street.
Thank you. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
You know the address. I just want to talk about amendment to have overtime for the police department. The amendment for the police department for overtime, just want to ask the chief, Mr. Haydar, and I don't mean it in a bad way, how many police officers we are short? Five police, any reason we do not have five police officers waiting to be hired?
Why don't you answer your question, and if you're going to answer, respond to them, please, I need you at the mic. We have a good chief on the way.
So, at this point, we are at, we hired an officer recently, and we had an officer return to work, so it brought us up to fifty, we have, I'm sorry, forty, and we have five police officers that we are doing background checks on at this time. We should have those five police officers hired by June first, and we'll be fully staffed at forty-five.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I recommend that you, you really increase the budget of the police department to hire more police officers, because we need more. The city stands on three things, police, fire, we have a great fire department, and DPW. So, we need to basically concentrate on those three things in order to feel safe in the city and to serve our, our youth and our public. I hope you consider that in your budget, not this year, maybe next year, that we need to make sure that the safety of our kids and the safety of our residents are really taken care of, and thank you, chief.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you?
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Trekkowski Columbia Street. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Going through the payables here, fund transfer and current claims. I know that the city has an agreement with the union and negotiated contracts to pay for educational expenses and stuff like that, but I'm not so sure that sustain with appointed or employees or anything like that. But for a person to come in here with a job less than a year, to hand over a six thousand dollar tuition fee to, to the city to pay their bill, is a little ridiculous to me. Let's show some longevity here, or whatever the rule is on this, but less than a year? What are we, a Friends of the Mayor, or what? You know? So, that's my question, it's item thirty-three. If you want to look into it, table it, do whatever, but that's one of my concerns. And also, just like everybody else, I live on Columbia Highway. I, I have a gentleman who thinks it's proper to put his two kids on his motorcycle and ride them through the neighborhood, up and down on the curb, the sidewalk and everything else, and then he has his other two children tail around on their mini bikes. I got video of this guy, he does four houses in four seconds. That's a house per second. The average house is what, about sixty foot long? So, how fast is he going? Forty on the sidewalk? So, if you're ever in the area of, you know, Joy Road and Inkster. Try going down Columbia. Emirates. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move it up to Zoom. Okay, seeing none.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
I was going to do an audience statement.
You can do it from your desk, whatever you want.
Tom Lonsaludus, Two Lane Street, Dearborn Heights.
You got two minutes.
This past weekend, we had our second annual Family Fun Night in Annapolis High School, and it was a really big success, we had a good time. I want to thank some people that helped out, sponsored Jamie's Kids, our fire and police pioneers and cadets, did a great job, they're great volunteers, we had a good time. Chief Haydar, thanks for coming with his family. Martin Zaboznik and his family, thanks for sponsoring. Moby Dune, Nancy Brier, Treasurer Lisa S. Clayton, Hassan Saab, Hassan Ahmed, all sponsored. This event was really, really worthwhile and helpful that they sponsored. The District Seven School District, Annapolis High School, my wife and my family, all the volunteers we had, the kids from Annapolis High School and Crestwood High School, our sponsors, J and T Crova, Dearborn Heights Firefighters, Local thirteen fifty-five, Al Sayad Meat Market, Saturn Food, Forty's Collision, I said, Moby Dune, Hassan Ahmed, Hassan Saab, Lisa S. Clayton, Nancy Brier, Mike Mackey, Hassan Bazey, Solid Oak Sausage, VIP Car Wash, and Mary Beth Baltowski. We, it was a great night, had, they had a lot of fun, all the kids had a good time, and thank you, everyone, for this weekend. We have another event coming up, it's our thirty-second annual Eat Horse Creek Rain Guard maintenance program, the Saturday, May seventeenth, at the Richard A. Young Center. It's a great outdoor event for family, weeding, planting, raking, having a good time. We, we go from nine AM to twelve PM, and we have T-shirts, we have food, we have the, the tools. I want to see everyone there, we have a good turnout from both our high schools every year there, and look forward to seeing everyone there the Saturday, nine PM, Richard A. Young Center, thank you.
Thank you. You speaking as a resident? One minute.
Actually, I want to speak as council member, I want to echo Mr. Bazey and Sue's comments about speeders. Mr. Bazey, that car that passed by your house, this is a car I've posted on Facebook multiple times, if anybody can get the plate, because he has an illegal exhaust. Know exactly which car you're talking about? Right, when you posted, I said the same guy, and I actually emailed the chief. Second thing is, we can point fingers at the police department, but it's not the police department, it's administration. If nobody's going to say that, I'll say it. It's a failed administration, and it's a failed legal department administration has. I have not seen one resolution or ordinance come through the legal department that had to affect these juveniles or these teens or anything in the past two years, not a single one. And we're still waiting and we're working on it, they say. To point fingers at our police officers, say there's more police officers, you can't put it at the police department. It's a failed administration, that's all it is, it's plain and simple. Thank you.
Council Chair, Council Chair, may I respond to that?
Let's just.
Because we have passed five, we proposed five ordinances, change that, we've started two new programs specifically for traffic in, in beefing up the program that now has once a month. We've also started that juvenile diversion intervention and prevention program with all our school resources officers in conjunction with Garden City, which we have a number of programs we're putting through, and we've not ignored the issues. I forfeited cars, I took, I took bonds on cars, I did, I seized twenty thousand cars with my department in one year with Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. I know about seizing cars, and we've, we looked at all the avenues, not just one, but I agree with, with Mr. Zehren, what the other gentleman is saying, Mr. Bazey, about what we do in towing. I don't just look at Dearborn, because I look at all the other cities. So, we are taking positive steps, which we'll bring to you, and we put our ordinances to back up what we're doing. Thank you so much. All right, next.
Lies.
Okay, come on.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Next up is fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims in ACH wire transfers six dash one through six dash fifty as submitted.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Like to table, I would like to table one item, number thirty-three. I want to see the legality on this, or the contract, how long an employee has to be to get this. Can get that back. The second one is the weight trade, oh, weight trim. Mr. Deeb. See it?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Mr. Deeb, there's an item on here, and if you could please clarify what this is, we're paying for. It says.
A number?
Forty-six. If you go through it, it says Garden City Hospital Support. Why are we paying for that?
You know, I also had some question on this while you're up, Mr. Deeb, I'm seeing, and I was having this conversation. I like a lot of these things. One, I want to know who the professional engineer is, professional, you know, engineer three, engineer two, engineer five, and then we also have this assist DPW, there was something here, oh, weekly progress meeting, they're charging us three thousand dollars for us to having a meeting with us, I mean.
It's, it's not one meeting, it's a series of meetings, so it's a progress.
Well, I know, the process is, they're charging us meetings from us meeting with them from the month, from this entire month of February, so one through twenty-eight.
Right, so the multiple.
They're charging us more money than our own lawyers are, two hundred and fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay, so the contract we pay, weight trim, was approved by the council, so we have the rates included, so the hourly rates are included, but these are multiple projects. So, when we have a progress meeting, these are multiple projects. So, we, we currently have forty-two projects active, forty-two, so it's multiple projects.
Can you tell me what the forty-two project?
I'm going to send you a list. We, we actually getting the list to put on, on the website, the entire summer, between, between the water, between the sewer, between the CSO, between the pavement, yeah, we have, we have many projects going, and, and they do require progress meetings, so they're, they're multiple. And then regarding the issue, it is not about the hospital, it's the sewers, it's a border street, Inkster is a border street, so we share sewers, storm actually go between the two cities. So, when we, when we actually look at capacity, we look at what's coming in from Inkster or adjacent city, or Dearborn, or, or Garden City. So, we try to maintain, so prevent, I had them look at capacity to prevent additional, because they're doing some work across the street, and I don't want any additional loads because that, that causes.
That's, that's why I'm asking this question about this, so is this because of the construction they're doing?
Right.
Why would?
They look at our system, not their doing. I, I just wanted to make sure, so I wanted to know if they're adding any more volume to our sewer storm line, so to, to prevent flooding. It's not, it's not, they're not helping them, they're helping us. It's, it's, you know, it just, maybe it's worded wrong, but they're looking at our system across the street.
And then also, I'm sorry, Council Chair, then for these progress meetings, when we set up contracts with, with, contracts with weight trim for projects.
Right.
That's their job is to meet with us.
Okay, so this is part of what we pay them, so when we take the contract out for approval, we put the soft cost. Soft cost is all the progress meeting, inspection, everything, that's soft cost. So, when we bring it in, it's usually a percentage of the contract construction, so how it's divided, we track it this way. So, when we meet, we track it that way before the invoice come in for payment. It's, so if it isn't them, it'll just be someone else.
I mean, Mr. Deeb, I, I want to know, and is anybody from weight trim online, or can we get one of them on here? I, I want to know who these professional engineers are, and why we have just some engineer threes, engineer five, professional engineers. Who are these people? Who?
I have, I have a list of these costs with the grade and the, and the rate per hour. So this is part of what we, what we, the soft cost that we initially agreed to when the project went out. So I have a CSO under construction today and it, and you don't charge engineer five or top level engineers for field work. It'd be like a, a lower level engineer two or three. So, um, different rates. So the, otherwise, I mean, you know, so a professional engineer is different than the.
Can I ask, I want to table this and just get us the detail and the breakdown of the names. Like to see. Please.
Mr. Deeb, when you do that, have him give us a better description also on this Garden City Hospital support. I mean, because this is, that's weird that that's on here, I mean.
It, it shouldn't have said, it, it is our system. It is on, on Dearborn Heights side. The, the, the receiving manhole is on Dearborn Heights side. That's. But it's, you know.
I have just one more question. Mr. Deeb, I'm still sorry, but during the budget hearing meeting, I asked, like, we, we have, speaking with Manny, we have close to one point three million dollars that we're paying, um, this, this weight trim with an engineer, but we have less engineer in the country sitting here right in front of me. And like, I know that, you know, you can't, you can't manage to do all forty-three projects, but I mean, it's like, I mean, they're basically like, and then again, I'm just kind of thinking, this is not an attack on you, it's not an attack on weight trim. This is us saying, we are going to bring in in-house an engineer, but then we're going to have an outsourced engineer. We're going to pay this engineer a hundred, you know, with longevity and everything else, this amount of money. I want to give them one point three million dollars. What, what do we benefit from that?
I, I showed you in my office what they produce. They actually produce the blueprints and the documents that we put out to bid. So when that, when that, when that C, you know, CSO L forty-one, the one that's under construction on the south end today. They, they produce the documents. They actually, you do the survey, they produce the blueprint. We put that out to bid. This is what they do. I oversee that. I'm, I'm, I'm the contact between them and, and, and the, um, you know, and the state. But they produce the documents. They actually go survey the street. They produce the blueprints. They put them out to bid. This is what they do and this is no different than any other agency. I mean, Wayne County is doing the same thing now. They don't do it in-house. Dearborn doesn't do it in-house. The state doesn't do it in-house. It, it's, it's so, it, and it, it's costing us more because we actually have a lot more projects underway this year than we've ever done, a lot. It's like three times the normal, so it costs money. But it's all figured out as part of the project. So you, you see one point three. It was all divided as part of each project. Each project has soft cost in addition to the construction cost. And that's, that's how, that's how it adds up, because we do have a lot going on this year, a lot.
Thank you. Oh, okay. We just have this table not to say, oh, and I believe Councilman wants to ask some questions. Sorry.
Real quickly, did they find any, uh, taxing, uh, on our, some taxing on our system? Um, not, not taxing. So, uh, actually we found surprises that we didn't know. There was illicit discharge that we didn't know about. There are some pipes that are actually charging into Dearborn Heights, but that's not very unusual. I just wanted to make sure that we have the proper flow so that next event, rain event, I know exactly what to expect. So you go to the drainage area and figure out how big of a drainage area, what, what, um, the hospital is doing now is they're containing most of their flow, which helps us. So it, they contain the flow during high event, rain event by building a pond. So that, that's actually, um, um, you know, that's, that's going to help us in the next storm. Is there any way to, to put these costs on the original contract instead of adding them on later? Well, they're looking at our system. Well, there's no. For all these, uh, the engineering things. Well, so the as needed, if you recall, I brought in, uh, four contracts on RFQ as needed. There's really no project per se. I mean, this is not a project on its own. So CSO is a project. Yes, you put that as part of the project. Um, the, um, um, the sewer and the water main, those are separate projects. But these general engineering stuff, these are not projects. They are as needed, as you go. Thanks.
Thank you. You'll be able to get this back to us by the next one. Okay, thank you. I, I also do appreciate Beach Daily and I know we're trailing here, um, and the specifications and, and support on that, so thank you. Any other, uh, discussion on, on this?
Council Chair, on, um, number thirty-three, the item. I sent an email out to everyone when I got the message this afternoon. Um, I quoted the, the letter from Mayor Ruth Canfield, Controller Donald Barrow, uh, HR Director, Union Resource Director Chris Sullivan from Kurt Heisey, September twelfth, two thousand and one, which quoted the, um, the two thousand, two thousand and three collective bargaining agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Local two ninety. Effective July first, two thousand, which provided for a tuition reimbursement benefit, Article thirty, page seventy-two. City Council Motion O-one, two nineteen, also extended the terms and the, and conditions of the two thousand, two thousand and three AfSCME contract to the city's non-union employees. And in Section One, it reads that the city shall reimburse employees for the full cost of tuition the courses relating to the employee's work determined, determined by the mayor's office and the relevant department heads. Uh, it is the management position at the time that the City of Dearborn Heights, that employees who volunteer to improve their education lead to better trained and educated employees, which in turn allows the city to provide and maintain improved service standards for its residents. The tuition assistance policy is intended to encourage, assist within certain economic guidelines, employees who seek to improve their job-related skills and education for the benefit of themselves and the city. And I put in my email that, that the positive benefits, that to process the procedure to an accredited school. If they leave employment before, um, it, it's paid off, they don't get that reimbursement policy. But I mean, I, I did itemize it for people. And I think penalizing an employee, whether she's new or not, she has an obligation for our policy to follow through. And it's to benefit the residents, not to benefit that person. Now, there may be courses in a master's program or a graduate, another graduate program that you may not see relate specifically to the, to the city, but the overall product improvement of that employee is to benefit the city. That's why I think we took the time to put the email and quoted the, the, the original people who put this together and the reason why. And they're all admirable people. I know, uh, it's Heisey and Mr. Heisey and the people that related to that family. So anyway, I think that's some things that we have to put for the record. I don't think it's someone trying to steal from the city, but I think it's to benefit the city.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I, I think that's a little outdated. Back then, there was longevity. People, when they worked at a job, worked there till they retired. Now people have a tendency to job hop. And it doesn't necessarily mean that by paying for their tuition, we are going to personally benefit from it. There's no guarantee. They're not going to leave next year. Um, like I said, unfortunately, it's a sign of the times, people job hop.
Thank you, guys. And look, I, I will say, um, quickly, I mean, one, we'd have to see the contract. I don't think I've seen any director's contract since the mayor's just given contracts. I sent it to the police chief the other day. I've never seen his contract. Not seen anybody. I haven't seen nobody's contract. And so what does it say in that contract? Did the council approve that contract? Um, and number one, number two, my next concern and question is, um, you know, here we almost paid out a former comptroller. We're going to give the comptroller ten thousand dollars and the comptroller just left.
I think they have to pay first and then you reimburse them after. It doesn't stop people from doing on their own, but you don't give them a check to go, they have to pay out of their pocket first.
I, I understand that. What I'm saying is, like, for example, like, Roger, what I'm trying to say is, we were going to give the former comptroller, was it ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars for her tuition. Two weeks later, she quit. You know, what, 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 what I'm trying to say here is, one, I think the right process here, and I think Kevin Swob, former police chief, Kevin Swob did a good job at it. He'd walk up to the city council and say, I'd like to take these classes. These are the classes that I'm going to register for. This is what it's going to cost me. It came before the body. Body had, we had the conversation. He took the classes and we paid for it. But what's happening here right now is, well, I mean, he quit too, but it seems like everybody's getting, you know, but what, what, what we're used, what, what would be the bright policy here is you say, I would like to take these classes, you know, this is in my contract. You guys approved my contract. This is what I get paid and I also get one, two, and three. There's nothing wrong with that. I think that's fair. I think anybody that wants to better themselves and, you know, learn more and get more education to be able to give it back to Dearborn Heights, that's amazing. What I don't want to see is, and unfortunately it's happened twice, is that we've paid two employees before. Uh, again, I don't know what's in that contract. I don't know what's in the longevity. I don't know what former Ruth Canfield made those decision. I wasn't around. What I can say is, common sense is, somebody wants to get this, like in anything else that we pay for. We request to pay, we request to approve something, it gets approved, the city council goes out and, you know, it does the work and we paying the bill. Come out and say, hey, I went to school, I did all the stuff, and here you go pay my bill at the end of the year. While we know, and the mayor knows, and Roger knows, and the, I don't know who the comptroller is, but Manny's here, and the chief of staff knows, and Plan Moran knows, the city's in a really tough financial position. In a very tough financial position, which none of us here should be ignoring. We all know, including the chief of staff, who's going to get up here and tell me how she's entitled to it. Everybody knows the city is struggling. And so if it is, the truth is, have that kind of courtesy to understand that the taxpayers are going through some things and we can't approve a contract that we've never seen.
Council Chair, this has been shared with you since May seventh, as requested by the council. This is a policy that, as Mr. Farina has mentioned, has been in place since at least two thousand and five. Those have never been changed. It has always been authorized by the mayor to authorize the debt directors to issue this payment. Additionally, this fiscal year, you have made payments for multiple union employees and it is simply a problem when directors are making this request. In addition, Ms. Saad is almost done with her degree. I believe she has one semester left, so it's not like this is going to be an ongoing expense. It was one of the requirements that she requested in her fringe benefits, which were, were already included when we brought her in because she did, wanted to have that benefit as many other directors have it in other communities. So again, if you want to make changes to the policy, it has been shared with you. I reshared today due to the concerns that were arise today, not last week, when I shared this with all the council members in preparation for tonight's meeting, that show you the history dating back to two thousand and five. So my concern is not that we're not in a tough financial situation, is that you have a legal duty to pay this based on your existing contracts. If you want to change that, that's a hundred percent okay, but you simply can't deny the employee currently because those contracts exist.
Mariana, I got a question. Yeah, we didn't have.
One second, please. You said the mayor authorized this, right?
All the mayors have, yeah, it dates back to two thousand and five.
Okay, this is dated four twenty-eight, twenty-five and it was given to him. I can guarantee you, the mayor was out of his office for weeks. Who signed this?
Again, this was discussed when she was brought in. We knew that she was going to be taking those courses since the beginning. The mayor gives the authorization. So the policy reads, that department head or the deputy must complete and submit the tuition assistance form to the mayor's office for approval before registration of the class. The mayor must approve the class before the registration is to take place. The employee must take an elective or required course at an accredited educational institution to complete an undergraduate or graduate degree where the degree pursued is directly related to the employee's work as determined by the mayor. The employee must satisfactorily complete the approved coursework with at least a C grade or a two point O on a four point O scale. For graduate level courses, the employee must receive a B grade or a three point O on a four point O grade scale or equivalent. The department head or duty deputy must still be employed with the city upon completion of the coursework. No reimbursement will be made to the department head or deputy who has left the city's employ prior to the completion of the class. To make that correct, correction for the comptroller, we never asked for payment. We asked for a budget amendment. And when she left, we stopped asking for that budget amendment.
Mariana, I asked a question. Who signed the paper?
The mayor did.
He wasn't here.
It doesn't have to be a physical signature. It could be an online signature. Or an online approval, which again, this has been approved.
Because if you actually look at this copy.
Correct.
It's a scanned copy because you can see the back of it, where it says account summary and everything else on the back page.
Correct.
And this is a signature. This is not an electronic signature.
Correct. And the mayor gives the authority to use his stamp when necessary.
This is not a stamp.
Then he signed it. I don't know what to tell you. It's his signature. No one's forcing signatures here. So what? He may have signed it ahead of time. I don't know what to tell you, but it's his signature.
The document says it was printed four twenty-eight, twenty-five at twelve oh seven PM.
Then he signed it. I don't know what to tell you. He could have signed it somewhere else and scanned it in.
I want to table that. I'm moving it off.
I agree.
Again, I, I just wanted to point out that you're being unfair because you've offered this to other employees and this is simply another employee who also has the same rights.
And also, I want to make sure who has authority to sign documents also.
The mayor, as the document reads.
Any other, uh, things here? And Councilman Saab, are you amending your motion?
Yes.
Councilman Con, are you seconding that?
Well, yeah, and I'd just like to enunciate what we want to see. Um, it is a big bill of, of six to three hundred dollars. What we want to get in order to approve this. Do we want something from the student? Do we want?
Um, let's see the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, then it was included by.
I mean, what Roger enunciated was the practice of the city to extend benefit that goes to the union members to the non-union member, i.e. the department director here.
Thank you.
Council Chair. Um, on a different item. Uh, item number, I think it's twenty-five for Duke's. Um, Director Dancy, what address this is for? There's no address on the invoice. And I had asked in the past that we have an address on them or we need to refer them back to you for an address.
Refer it back then.
I'll refer it back. Thanks. Number twenty-five would be referred back for Duke's. Uh, page fifty.
Okay, so we're going to move that as well. We'll have that one just updated for us.
Yeah, let's bring it back. No, this will.
So the discussion. Twenty-five. Are you going to be, uh, amending your motion? Are you going to be seconding the amending of motion removing thirty-three, forty-six, and twenty-five?
Forty-six. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Council Chair. You know, we, we, we regularly deny our table or put back for administration, non, non-payment. Yeah, for these things. Um, we got to figure out that this ahead of time or, you know, we pay these vendors because they, they do the work. I know there's issues that, that, that come up that we, we have, that we can't pay them at that time or we feel they shouldn't pay. But, um, in most cases, they've done the work and they deserve to be paid, so we, we've got to come up with something instead of denying this. I mean, I.
All right, oh, yeah, for sure.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, a hundred percent. I, I know. I mean, it's, that's our right to do this and, and I, I'm not, I'm not, uh, debating, uh, these issues, but, you know, the more, it's, it's going to come to the point where, and we got to solve this problem. And I, I know we, we see these problems. That's why we're bringing them up. That we're going to have a hard time finding vendors, you know, that. Yes.
Yeah, part of doing the job is billing correctly and accurately. And if we ask for that, there should not be a problem with them filling it out completely. They failed to put it on and it's, it falls on them for the delay in the payment.
Council Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, and just to follow up on what Councilman Wenzel said, I recall when I was in the legislature, there was a big problem because like cities like City of Detroit or Highland Park, they were two years behind in their payables and that was one of the reasons for the Detroit bankruptcy. So can we, we're in agreement that once we see the contract, uh, if it exists for number thirty-three, that the tuition will be paid?
Yep, thank you. All right. Motion made by Councilman Saab to amend thirty-three, twenty-five, thirty-three, forty-six, second by Councilman Con, in the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carried. Next up, we have seven A, DPW Director Dancy, bid award emergency underground excavating, as needed contract.
Council Chair.
Council Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded a bid for emergency response contracts for underground services to diverse, diverse field excavation and on-grade specialist to, and return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contracts on behalf of the city as outlined in seven A.
Support.
By Council, Saab, second by Councilman Con, in the discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carried. Next up, we have DPW Director Dancy, bid award emergency flood response, as needed contract.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded the bid for flood response services to Premier Group Associates and return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidder. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in seven B.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Con, second by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All, the ayes have it, motion carried. Next up.
Next up is DPW Director Dancy, bid award sanitary storm pipe cleaning and televising, as needed contract.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Move the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded a bid for sanitary and storm pipe.
Move the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for sanitary and storm pipe cleaning and televising services to Duke Sewer and Rural Control and return all other bids. In addition, authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in seven C.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Madelski Maxwell, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have reports from Mayor, none?
Surprise.
Come on, guys. Let's be nice. Next up, we have reports from city officials. Okay, number nine A, clerk Sinia Alley Vacation Ford Road between Berwin Street and Norborn Avenue.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the vacation of the alley at Ford Road between Berwin Street and Norborn Avenue. The utility easement will be part of the clo- part of the closures outlined in nine A.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman, I almost called him Councilwoman. Councilman Constant, any discussion? Hearing none, well, I will say, I wanna thank our clerk, and I wanna thank uh the assessor's office because we actually initially approved this a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago. This is uh behind the uh Al Said Meat Market, but we had missed a stop. And so we had to redo the entire process. We had to actually open up for public hearing. We had to hear from the public. Uh, and then we had to come back and bring in the four city council, and this was this was the right way of doing it, so. Uh, hopefully this passes here tonight, and thank you to our clerk and our assessor for helping us out here. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is clerk Sinia Election Budget Adjustment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the movement of monies from the revenue account that were received into the election capital outlet one oh one, one nine zero, nine eight one zero 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 in the amount of twenty eight thousand, four hundred thousand, fourteen cents to replace the damaged election equipment as outlined in nine B.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no? Just kidding. Just kidding. Things were just moving too smooth. You thought I was just gonna let you swing by, huh? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations, you got it. Next up, the city engineer Deeb, this one's gonna be nice. New fire station site selection.
Council Chair.
There he is, nodding his head, Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve proposed site blank and authorize the initiation of the design phases outlined in nine C.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion? We'll see. Before we hear anything from the engineer, I wanna hear from our fire chief. I wanna know.
This is, I'm not gonna be honest with you.
No, 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 let's hear from him.
Whatever the chief says, where they think is the fire station should be, is where my decision's gonna be.
Boy, okay. Hey, here we go. Mister, Mister Honorable New Rays. After thirty years.
So Council Chair, for the original motion, should we put to be determined?
To be determined. Okay.
Propose site to be determined, yeah.
We're putting to be determined. And I'll choose it after, just for now, so to end the motion. Yeah, Toby, and Mister Mister Deeb was a little confused about, and trying to explain, in order to close the motion and open it for discussion.
So, so you know, we've taken a lot of different sites into account, and um and after after all of the, all of the choices that we had, putting on the site on the golf course, on Beach Daily, across from the uh um tennis courts is gonna be the the safest, best location for our response procedures and to get us out of the response areas from the where current, where we are currently. We're surrounded by all the traffic from the kids. We have to cross Ford Road sixteen times a day. Um, and it's just, it's not a great location. And for a response procedure, Beach Daily and Warren is gonna be the best location. If we go on the Warren location that we've looked at, there are lots of problems with that site that the engineer is more suited to to respond to than I am. But a- and I understand there's there's issues with it being on the course itself, but we've we've spoken with the golf operators. They can still have twenty seven holes of golf with the with the location of our of that station there, and so that's that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Chief.
So uh in addition to what the chief says, and we 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 coordinate, I coordinate um every step of the review process with the end user, obviously. He's my client, if you will. So this is not my decision, it's 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 a shared decision. But um so I covered the engineering um um uh issues with all the sites that we looked at. Uh, we even tried to go outside the box to look at other alternative sites that the city owns. And and um I looked at Act fifty one, the map from the state, and there were a lot of sites that we do own, but they were not, um they will not make the response time for the for the for the fire department. So we concentrated on the areas that the G I S response time will meet for the north side of Dearborn Heights, and uh we concentrated on that area. So the site two B, which is Beach Daily just north of the entrance to the uh mansion, just south of Ann Arbor Trail, uh turned out to be the best uh uh from the geotechnical engineering, response time, uh flood mitigation, everything. That site was ideal. So that's the recommendation I think we both shared. And I'd like to add one more thing. Keep in mind that, you know, the last time we looked at the structural issues at the fire uh station, existing fire station was two thousand and twenty one, and uh these issues are still real. Uh, if we are to approve a site today, and I start the engineering work tomorrow for the design, I'm at least two years away from a new building. So um I urge you, uh the the issue, the structural issues, I I had a tour with the chief today of the uh Beach Daily Fire Station, and I'm not real happy. It it, you know, we we need to come up with an alternative. We need to find a new building.
Now, I wanna put something into perspective of what are you dealing with? I know a lot of people is saying the golf course, golf course, golf course. I respect that. Nothing out, nothing's getting built on the golf course other than this, other than the fire sta- the fire station belongs to the city, to the residents. And the thing is, the most important thing about this whole project is response time. A minute can, you can either allow somebody to survive or die. And that's the difference that where everybody's not thinking about. It's a response time.
And I'd like to add on to that, the response time and the safety, the the safety aspect, from where we're at right now, I mean, the we're literally surrounded by high school kids who are known for not always making the best decisions. I mean, there are hundreds of them that surround our station two times a day. We're locked in, it's it's hard to get in and out. Crossing Ford Road, uh it's not, it's not our trucks getting in the accidents. It's it's people stopping and someone else doesn't stop, and people get rear-ended, and and when you're doing that sixteen times a day, there's just bound to be accidents. So, yeah, there's many, many factors that went into this, and I understand that the difficult decision that uh you guys are in, but this truly is the best location.
Decision I'm looking at, the most important one, is safety. If somebody's having a heart attack, that one minute is life or death.
Absolutely.
So, and uh based on the studies we did, that was the best location for response time. That's correct.
Council Chair. Um, I'd like to make a suggestion. I live right by there, that light up by Riverside, Kennedy to Beach Daily. Um, I'd like to suggest you put a crossing guard there. Those kids, when they cross, they stop in the middle of the road, they're playing around. They're junior high kids. They don't get it that they should be just moving out of the road. Um, we need to educate the Riverside students, you don't stop in the middle of the street and talk.
Right.
You know, it's a crossing, and I could see you running into problems with that. So they need to understand cross as quick as possible and get out of the way, because I hate to see you have to spend. Sometimes I'll miss the light because there's, I can't turn left out of there.
No, that's a good idea, yeah. You do that.
Go there during, when Riverside is letting out, and just sit there and watch what the kids do. It's unbelievable.
So, so part part of the new design as well, um is is we're taking an emergency crossing light, and we're also maybe considering a decal lane, so to try to um, so we, the the Beach Daily um 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 site allows us to do a lot more with less traffic, because we can, we did traffic count on both of them.
What about a crosswalk over the road?
Yeah, I did, I looked at other cities that do that, and 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 not too many. People are too lazy to go up the stairs. Um, I did, I I I visited that site. It's amazing.
You know, sometimes I'll sit there for a whole night, and I can't even make my left turn out there, because the kids.
I visited a case in Dearborn on Beach. It's exactly the same thing, and and the engineer told me, look at the count up. So they still had to put a signal on the street level because the kids didn't wanna go up the stairs and go over. I'm I'm just.
Yeah, I know.
You can't force them, you know, to go up there.
I I have a quick question for us. Wh- what about the site on Beach Daily on the hindsight? On, so you give us three options. Warren Beach, Beach in Hines, Beach on the Golf Course. What about on the cross the street, across from the?
On the cross the street, we spent over a year with the county, a year, and 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 they refused, it's owned by the county. So across from the entrance to to the golf course uh uh maintenance yard, there is a site. And and I just noticed last week, they actually started something. There's construction activities going on. So the county initially said uh they wanted to put up um a stable, horse stable, and then they changed their mind. They said, no, this is part of the uh R V S D S, the Rouge Valley Sewer Disposal System, so they wanted to put some kind of a, uh so but but uh we tried very hard. That would be.
But you've given, you've given us an option, though.
Well, no, the, I looked at two. Uh, Beach Daily had south of the uh driveway and north of the driveway. Two Beach Daily options. The north of the driveway is a better soil. It's less less um prone prone to flooding. That's.
Council Chair.
Yep.
And all due respect to our engineer and our chief, um I'm here, you know, and I respect their opinions immensely, and uh I'm here to give my opinion. That's why there's seven of us and not just one. Um, I'm having a a hard time with the response time. Moving the fire station over a mile north, that increases response, increased the response time to the furthest south section of the north fire station. You're moving it further away from the furthest south section that that engine, that fire station serves. So that's that's increasing the response time by mi- over a mile for that. The uh, the the area on the golf course, we had Google Map shots of the flooding recently. It was flooded, that area. And uh I'm in favor of being on Warren Avenue, obviously, and I swore to the residents of Dearborn Heights, after I voted no on this golf course contract initially, and I'd say it's a hundred times, I'm the only one to vote no on it, that I would never allow, I'd do everything I can to any kind of development on the golf course, and I'm keeping my words, and I'll be voting no on this.
I I I will say too, just to kind of echo Councilman Wenzel, which I also gave my word, and so I want you to know, I'm a very hard no when it comes to building on the golf course, because let me tell you, it's not gonna happen. You're gonna have zero response time in ten years when I think floods, and we have the same exact issue. You can nod your head and tell me, but let me tell you something. Our our current, our current uh golf court, or not golf court, but fire station was also engineered by engineers. It was engineered by Waitrim, who subcontracted the work to being done by people who then got rid of their LLC. I did all my research on this. I have packets of of of, when I first got on council, looking at why is this happening? I sat down with you also, Chief Brogan, we talked about this. The truth is, at least for me, I can say, I I I'm I'm gonna tell you right now, this passes, I'd be very disappointed. I know you guys want it on the golf course. I can tell you full-heartedly, I am a strong, hard no on the golf course. Either find that, a- another solution, but or put it at the front side where there's already building on top where you guys tell me, and I get it. The traffic and the schools and this and that. That that would be more of an understanding for me, where you're building it right on open land. But when when I look at this picture from Jason, which I'm gonna pull up for us real quick, and I'm even gonna show it to the camera. Sorry. When I look at this photo here, the entire golf course, including the area that you're telling me about, is underwater.
So, so that picture is like half mile away. I visited that site, it's not left. The site nor by.
Yeah, it is, it's right here. Yes, it's not, it's not right here, though.
Councilman, it's not?
It's it's not. If you look at this photo, this is a match exactly of what is flooded over here. It's right here, flooded.
That's that's not the site, uh Councilman's aside.
Well, I can tell you I'm a hard no. Council Chair, on anything that's gonna be built on the golf course, if it's a house, if it's a park, if it's anything. It's a Don Ross Golf Course, a hundred years old, it's got, it's a thirty six hole golf course. You're right, it does flood. And what I, oh, I I, Chief, I love you so much, and I know that like you have to make a decision because you wanna make sure that this continues on, but the truth is, I promise you, Warren Valley is made to flood, and it's not made to be built on. And if that was the case, they would have built on it eighty years ago, seventy years ago, fifty years ago, sixty years ago. You, the truth is, I don't care how much engineering you give me, it failed right here on Ford, on on Beach Daily. I don't put my trust in an in in an engineering a- approach on this location. Have to find another location.
Council Chair.
I'm gonna go to the Councilwoman, then Roger, then we'll go.
You know, right now, the city's in the process of buying up property along E Course Creek that were, homes were built that were, shouldn't have been built there.
Hundred percent.
And now, and then now we're gonna build something else on a potential flood. I mean, maybe just, maybe it floods once every ten years, but that ten years flood could cause a life for somebody, and it was, like you said, zero response time, some issue with it, you know. And uh, I mean, I I think it, I don't I don't know, it's not my job to look, find out locations, but the south, the north end fire station serves a particular area, I think it should be right in the middle of that area. The fastest response time.
So I'd like to hear from Chief Brogan. I know you want to respond to Councilman Wenzel.
That's the, that central area would be Beach and Warren. That 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 is the central area, yeah, that's, that's if you look at that, we have a G I S study that shows the travel times uh to to all these different locations and and it breaks it down by the the by the how many roads, or how many buildings would be or the the addresses that would get in certain response times, and and it's much faster in from Beach and Warren.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, thanks, Chief.
I would, I just reissue this as, for, uh I attended a a meeting of the, uh with mayors on Friday, where Congresswoman Tilapia and Congresswoman Dingle echoed our western mayors. If you don't use the money, they're taking it back. Get ready. It's 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 not six months from now, it's coming. So I I think we've done our due diligence, we it, as 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 to the residents, I ha- we have to trust our professionals, but with the danger and warning from Washington coming soon, we may lose that money.
What took so long? What took so long?
Come on, come on, I'm gonna respond to this thing. I'm gonna respond to this blatantly, straight up. I'm done with these tactics, man. If we lose it, you guys lost it. You lost. It's not before you humor it. You don't put it on anybody here, but take the blame yourself.
It's you.
You can ask him, me, right, okay, sure.
You lost it.
Yeah, right. Ask the buck.
I, we're not gonna be bullied into this.
No one's gonna bully anybody, but you're bullying us. And shit's named blame.
Okay, let's look, let's look at Kenfield. Kenfield is a dead space land, and I know you don't want it there. Or look at on the front side of of Warren Valley. I will be okay with that. What I'm not gonna tell you is building on thirty six holes, it's not gonna happen. You're not gonna get my support on you. Council Chair. You know, and I know it's gonna be hard with the traffic there. I get it, but but look, it's a central location. I wholeheartedly believe it'll fit, and 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 we can figure that out. Please nothing from the audience. Five hundred times courts also flood, sir. I spoke with Wayne County about it. I was on a Zoom meeting with Mr. Deeb. That floods. We we happen to live in a city that floods. I'm not just gonna take ten million dollars because we have ten million, and we might lose it, and we're gonna end up losing a fire station. Come on, guys, that's that, and I'm sorry that it took this long. We we asked for almost two years, figure out a site, figure out a site, figure out a site. Now you're rushing us and telling us this is the only site. And I respect the chief and Mister Deeb, wholeheartedly, because look, I want this body to know Mister Deeb is working hard on this. You are, I'm not taking that away from you. I know this is stressful for you, but it is a, for me, not the rest of the council, but for me, and I can see Councilman Wenzel, it's a hard no. On the golf course, it's a hard no.
Council Chair, I personally have been asking for a site suggestion for a year. And I mean, where where where's the, where's the site recommendation? We're working on it, we're working on it. I don't know whose fault it was, but it took a ye- over a year, you know, like you just said, maybe. To get to this point. And these were the sites that were originally, I know, I I heard, I contact, these were the original sites to begin with, years ago. And there was nothing else looked at. I mean, now we're thinking outside the box.
There's nothing from the audience.
Yeah, so I mean.
Just just one comment about the the one year for the site. The money came to us at the end of August, which was stipulated with a council approval, which we took to you in September. And then we put out, so we didn't have any money to investigate sites. We didn't have, so the money that came in, Roshiro Tabe's, uh, approval came in August, August twenty-seventh. We brought it over to council in September, so this is, this is, we didn't waste time. We started looking at sites, we investigated, we did geotechnical.
What about Site One, what about Site One?
The problem with Site One is, is the, the thing is too narrow. So I need to put four stations, I know the chief wanted five, but even if I duplicate what I have today. Just try to think of five fire trucks going through Alpha Warren Avenue on a narrow site. It, it, it's, it's narrow, it's, it, I mean, I, I, I didn't, you know, it, it's problematic. Uh, engineering wise, can you fit it and make it, make a loop in the back and go through the? Maybe, but, uh, you're right next to residential and it's a narrow site, it is a. You know, we have better sites, if I can find, I looked at sites all over the city, sites that we do own.
I have, I have one more question.
Yes.
There's a Salvation Army right there on Warren.
Yes, I know.
Okay, hang on. At one point, I knew a friend that was telling me the Salvation Army was up for sale. Okay, right there on Warren, it's a building that's already there. Why don't, why don't we reach out to them, why doesn't the fire chief, chief, can you do that? Hey, hey, I know you guys are all about giving back service, I'm the fire chief of the city of Dearborn Heights, we're looking for a new location, would you guys be willing? Maybe do a swap? Maybe we can offer the Salvation Army to be somewhat near the golf course, uh, on its, on its own building. And that way, you, you just have a, a, a spot there and we can take that location. I'll, I'll call them.
Okay.
We have to be innovative, we cannot just say, this is what we have and our hands are tied. We have to, we have to think outside the box here. It's, I know it's more down Warren, but it's away from the school, it's, it's a huge lot. And from what I hear, one, I, I mean, he, Crest Ridge has got a church for a dollar because they said as long as it's gonna stay with the school board. They got a building for one dollar.
I'll double that, huh? I'll double that for, if they'll give me the building.
You'll give us the thing for two bucks? You got it. Well, if you want Chief Tomomi, you can get on the phone call.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I mean, if it work, it work.
Yeah.
And the designers are not Waitren, by the way, so the designer is a different company.
But, I mean, we're gonna table this, Chief, let's get on the conversation, unite them all. Thank you, you know what, we'll even take a drive in. Later in the morning. Again, I don't mean to shut, you know, I don't wanna stop this, the discussion is healthy, if anybody else wants to give their comments on this.
Do you think Salvation Army is a good idea?
Anything?
I say we trust the experts, we own it, that, that it's not gonna interfere that much with the golf course. And, you know, God help us, let the golf course be successful, but if it's not, we're not buying, we're not paying for other land.
The, the issue we have, Councilman, is it's a valley, it's designed to flood. And if it didn't flood now. Right, if one, if we just, in the last ten years, we've had two hundred-year storm. And everything was flooding, okay? The, the issues with that soil, and I, I'm not even an engineer. It's gonna sink like what's happening sinking on Ford Road, I mean, on Beach Daily. But like, we have to think about this.
Where Salvation Army isn't, it dips down.
Well, again, have the engineers look at it, or at least, it's a big lot, it's bigger than the lot that we're trying to give, uh, to them now.
Mr. Deeb, what about the Canfield, uh, center?
It's right next to where the station we hear is.
Yeah, but the station is not about, the, the station, the problem is the material that was probably grown.
So the existing station apparently was, was at one time a pond. And the restoration was not done properly, it was a wet land to begin with, years and years ago. So the report that I discovered that they actually had backfilled material and they used expansive, um, um, slag. Uh, based material, which today's, um, uh, inspection in the city, the, the building, that's still causing, it's uneven. Um, uh, settlement only on the interior walls, so the outside walls with proper foundations are intact, basically. It's the interior CMU's, uh, uh, heavy walls, they're actually unevenly settling all over the place. So, um, is, does, does that extend to where the Canfield site? You, if you, if you're thinking about demoing the Canfield and, and, uh, is that, is that the process? That's another option, I guess, uh, we can look at that, yeah, I mean, the, the property is large enough. Um, uh, we can, we can test the soil to make sure that we don't face the same, um, soil strata.
Let's take that into consideration too.
Would you? Yeah, I mean, we, we. There will still be challenges with that, but I mean, obviously, if, if, if Warren Valley is absolutely not, I think that's the best location. If, if that's absolute no, then, then this could be something that we would consider as well, but, like, the, the. When Crestwood High School gets out, I mean, there are hundreds of kids all around us and it's just, uh, it's just not safe, I, 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 and then crossing Ford Road.
You not like Site One?
People picking up their.
Which one is, is the Site One on Warren? So, so that, that one, I mean, and, and if we do, I know, he, uh, Mr. Deeb said four bays, I, we really need five bays. Like, like, it was built with four bays and, and we have outgrown that station, we had four thousand runs a year when we had that, now we have more trucks that are responding. But anyways, it would be very hard to fit it on there, um, and then I know there's other issues with the parking and, and drainage and, uh.
Just the truck, maneuvering the trucks in, they're fire engine, they're not small chugatz, they're, they're big fire engines. Five bays or four bays, look at the size of the, and try to maneuver it in an hour.
Yeah, Council Chair, hang on one second, Council. Uh, Councilwoman Breyer is next.
Uh, well, I do agree with Bob, I'd rather we use property we own, we're not gonna have more than twenty-seven holes at the golf course. And if we go in front on Warren, you're interfering with the neighborhood over there. And we'd have to possibly extend the parking lot to accommodate giving the school some of our parking lot. And we gotta go over burn area and everything else. And if you consider Canfield and you have to tear it down, that's immensely expensive.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to, look what I'm gonna do, and I don't wanna take this from anybody, we're gonna take this to a vote. If anybody wants to make a notion to choose a location and take it to a vote, we're more than welcome.
Council Chair, can I just make one quick statement?
Yeah.
I mean, for one thing, uh, the, the, the south end station borders a house. So being close to residence, that's not really an issue.
His name is Robert, and those right next, the houses right next door to a resident named Robert.
Both of them, but, um, I think we're, I think we're, you know, this Site One, I think we're, we're neglecting that. This station property could go all the way to the main entrance to the golf course. It's not just this little corner, not just the, the, uh, southwest corner.
I agree.
And there's nothing in our contract with the golf course that says we can't take up as much of that parking lot as we want building, what we want built.
No, the tar parking lot.
Yeah.
So I see what you're saying, if you look at it.
Yeah.
You say build it right in the front, you have the cars come around and just go off from the front.
That, that, we're, 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 closed minded, you're saying just that little corner there, when we've got that whole area along Warren Road. You know? That was the feet problem.
You guys, you guys see what he's talking about, Mr. Deeb here?
Yeah.
So he, what he's talking about here is, we have this, and then you also have the strip here.
Yes.
So what he's saying is if you built the golf course, I mean, if you built the fire station here and you brought the cars around, you'd be able to.
Council Chair, keep in mind, this is the only possible expansion for parking lot to, for, for the golf course, that's the only possible.
But if we do, if we do this, if the school ends up doing theirs, you're getting an additional sixty parking spots.
Yeah, I know, but that's, so consider what we have built at the golf course today and, and with, with, with the, um, um, improvements that you've done. Um, I went over the weekend and that entire website was, was closed. I mean, that parking lot was full and we haven't opened any of the, uh, venues, just, just golfing, and that was just weekend.
Well, because there's a lot of construction, half of the, I, I go there, half of the parking spots are, are broken, they're not holding this. So that's why it looks full, because everybody's parking in six parking spots.
It was.
If you actually had the parking.
I don't, I don't, I'm not partial to any site, I'm just saying that from, from a layout standpoint. That a four or five bay to try to, to, to maneuver vehicles in that place is, is quite.
Mr. Deeb, can I ask you a question on the record? Could it be a possibility? Could it be a possibility? That if we put, uh, on the fire station? It could flood?
The north, the north side, the Site Two A. I, I have never seen, I've looked at the entire FEMA maps for all of the, the hundred-year storms, that site was never flooded.
Mr. Deeb, could it be a possibility?
Can we guarantee the future, no one can, no.
Could there be a possibility that it could flood? It, it could, it could potentially see the same repercussions that we're seeing today?
Well, potentially. I, so it, so you notice that current fire station, the outside walls are not sinking. They're properly built with proper foundations, it's the interior walls, so it's a, it's a slab, slab on grade. And, and the outside walls have inverted tables and they're, they're working fine, there's no settlement. So when we take that into account, when we build a new station, you better believe it will be built properly so, as to not to sink. So it, it, I mean.
Is there a possibility that it could?
Down in the hill.
If we do it properly, no, I mean, uh, Councilman Wensel says you built next to the river, um, and we put, um, uh, the Renaissance on there and it's not sinking.
Council Chair.
You know, I mean, it, it, you should be able to do it, we should be able to do it.
Uh, there, there is one other thing, that we need a certain amount of parking spaces because we will have three businesses there. And if we wanna maintain a liquor license, we have to have X amount of parking spaces.
And then just, so I also mentioned the drainage of that parking lot is also utilizing a, a, um, open ditch on that site at one.
Why'd you give us, why'd you give us the site if you guys don't?
Well, I mean, initially, initially, we didn't, you know, we wanted to look at every possible location. So we did, and I didn't, so I didn't waste money on stuff that we don't own, this is the stuff we own.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I have a motion on the table here, allowing anybody that wants to choose a site, to choose a site, we can take it to a.
Council Chair, I just wanna refer it back.
Okay, or we can refer this back to administration, Councilman Saab, do you wanna refer, do Councilman Constant use, support that?
You don't wanna have a vote on the, I thought I, we referred them.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, second, well, referring it back with what direction?
Come back with the two other locations we did.
And Council Chair, one other.
Salvation Army and what else?
Canfield.
Oh.
Ali Deeb or, uh, Engineer Deeb?
Site One.
The problem at the existing fire station. What's in state is not, but it's flooding, was the way the foundation was laid. So it's not, not waters coming in the two inches of water, it's, it's the foundation of the fire station.
So it was designed as a, 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 without paying the, so the backfill material, this is what we found from the drawing, the backfill material that was used. Slag, um, um, you know, uh, material is very expansive, meaning that it, if it gets, you know, wet, it expands. And, you know, so it, it, it's a combination, it's not a bad design, it's, it's, it's a combination, maybe oversight during construction was not exercised. Whatever, it, 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 so it is not a bad design, it's.
Mr. Deeb, did we save that building or no?
Uh, so we did, part of the twenty-one study was what would it cost to try to save it in place? Retrofit, cut the floors and, and build foundations under all the.
Yeah, I ain't talking about.
And that, and that was much more expensive than building a new one.
But I'm saying though, if we built a fire station, can we save the building to multi, to use it for something else? Possibly, city hall.
Possible, so, so basically the outside walls, the foundation walls are fine, so the interior, the interior partition walls. Currently, because it's a fire station, they're twelve-inch cinder blocks, they're heavy as can be, so if you are to go to, you know.
They're sitting on a slab, right?
Yeah, it is on slab, sure.
You'd have to tie the slab into the exterior where the foundation walls are stable somehow.
We don't tie a slab, we built, we built, we built footing under it, but it'll be cheaper. If you wanted to reuse the building for something else, once it's vacated, yes, we could, we could. Repurpose the building, absolutely, maybe a city hall.
Council Chair, can we amend the motion to, I mean, I'm, I'm recommending Site One, we, can we vote on that?
Can.
Do I have to make a separate motion on that or?
If, if Councilman Saab is okay to amend his motion on.
You can vote on it, I mean, I don't mind, we can take it for a vote.
Okay, would you like to, for, can I make, can you redo the motion to say Site One?
Yes, I recommend that Dearborn City Council approved, proposed Site One and authorized the initiation of the design phases outlined in I N C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab to choose Site One, seconded by Councilman Constant. And Council Chair. Just so we're clear, this is the site that the chief recommends, correct?
No.
Uh-uh. No. But this is the site that gives the fastest response time, is that correct?
No.
No, it's not.
It's the same, it's the same.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
It's the same.
Warren is the.
That corner.
Yeah, Beach Daily and Warren is, is where we wanted for the response times.
I mean, this would, basically, yes.
But, you know, I'm digging the Salvation Army, it, we may just need to buy the parking lot, it's big enough, maybe they'll split the property and sell. I mean, the parking lot is huge.
We have a motion on the table.
The three four. Council Chair, I'd like, I'd like the motion to include, uh, that we look into expanding Site One east to the main entrance.
That's, that's up to engineering though, we're not tax.
I mean, that, that, not just.
Look into it.
Yeah, look into it, yeah.
Yeah, but you gotta stick crazy as shit.
All in favor, uh.
Wait, wait, wait.
So where exactly is Site?
In front of the golf course, on the side of the golf.
In front, right off.
Yeah, right on the side where they're burmies.
Yeah. All in favor, please say it, aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
No.
And for, please take roll call.
Tim Wenzel?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
No.
Denise Malinowski-Mexel?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Mo Bejou?
Yes.
You have a time motion defeated. Three, three.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Comptroller's Office Budget Amendment.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the budget amendments necessary for upcoming payments as outlined in I N C ninety.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
We referred this back ten times because there's no money to give these amendments.
Yes, I agree. You wanna do it?
We'll refer it back.
Here comes our Chief of Staff and our Deputy Comptroller. Or Enstrom Comptroller.
What was the, uh, question, Councilman Saab?
There's what?
About the, uh, nine D about the, uh, budget amendments.
Oh, no, the question was that we don't have money to give?
Yeah, move around, yeah.
So the expense line items that we are removing from are not from fund balance, they're from various GL numbers within the general fund. Um, those expense and GL numbers have a little bit extra budget to give to make up for the other budget line items which are in the second half of the page. Uh, so we can pay any outstanding invoices. And nothing's coming out of general fund balance, they're coming from the GL.
But like, we, like, I, when I looked at these, the current balance, then the amended balance.
It's a negative, isn't it?
No, I mean, it's, it's an equal swap, three seventeen to three hundred seventeen thousand. But what are these current fees, like, for example? Like the district court repairs for twenty thousand dollars.
So, uh, with the.
We've been asking to, to fix the district court repairs for so long. Police motorfield, police contractual services.
So for the district court one, uh, building maintenance actually takes on all the repairs for that building. And they've been paying out of their budget, which is why it's over budget for building maintenance. Um, so we took some money from core repairs as well as police repairs for that.
Is, is there a Madam Clerk here? Because I could have sworn our city-owned property that we took from seventy-five thousand. Was, we used it at the last amendment that we did for IT, we used city-owned money. And it was for, um, this, we used it for IT, so how, how is it still seventy-five thousand? The last time we amended the budget was seventy-five thousand.
I'm not aware of that, I went based off of the current GL and the budget amendments were, I was told that the previous budget amendments were all put in the system.
Yeah, it wasn't.
We still have money in city-owned properties, uh, to give additional money to, to other accounts.
No, but then, but this is, this number is not accurate. Seventy-five thousand was used the last, just re, just two weeks ago, we, we approved IT's money. We gave two hundred fifteen thousand dollars, and I looked over and I said, city-owned property. And we went from seventy-five thousand, we moved forty-five thousand, realistically, it was like. You, you don't have that same amount of money, so you're not giving us that accurate number.
To my knowledge, it's accurate, however, um, Chief Hernandez can pull up the GL number just to confirm. Um, by the way, I, I do have some.
Can you, can you, George, can you pull that one up from the last one, please? Yeah.
So we already have one in the system for thirty-five thousand dollars for the IT amendment, which is motion twenty-five two-two-eight, so there's a remaining balance in there.
I understand that, but the remaining balance is not the seventy-five thousand like you put on here, you're like, we're get, we're, we're inflating this number, so it's okay to take it out.
Correct, there's a thirty-seven.
So these numbers, like, that's just one that I'm touching, I'm just blanking, what?
The original balance started, the start of the year was seventy-five thousand.
Maybe I understand, I, I know that.
Yeah.
And then you guys took away thirty-five thousand dollars from it. And, and so the remaining balances, you're right, you still do have the correct amount, but you don't have the correct total of what we still have available. Because we're just using what we had from the early of the year. Because we're just using what we had from the early of the year.
So we, right now, we have thirty-seven thousand and we're not going to be using that money.
Do, do me a favor.
Yes.
I don't want to go through this because I'm not the comptroller.
Yes.
On this. Give us the right accurate number and bring this back to us at the next city council meeting. But let's do the right numbers here.
I will say that a lot of these vendors have been waiting for a few months and they're constant, constantly calling. I can guarantee you that none of these account numbers are going to be over budget by the end of the year.
I, I believe you, but here is just one mistake that we caught.
Yeah.
But let's, let's do it the right way.
Okay.
And give us the right numbers and give us the right sum and total.
I will say, like I said, the vendors are calling daily on an update regarding payment. I do not want to continue pushing out vendors for payments when I can guarantee that the budget amendments that are being decreased, there is enough money in those line items. I checked specifically for the current as of April thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and ensured that any money I'm removing, it will not reduce it below zero or possibly below zero by June thirtieth. So I apologize if I had a mistake in a couple of these numbers, but the remaining balances are not going to be.
I heard, I heard your statement, but I want you to know, you didn't even know that that was supposed to be at thirty-five thousand.
I was going based off of the original.
But you went from April twenty-fifth, you would have known that.
I understand it, but I'm going, I was going off the, I was removing money out of the accounts based on the current balance out of the accounts.
Let's, let's do it the right way, please, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. I do want to give you a heads up that the vendors are going to be very upset and continually bothering myself and the treasurer regarding payment.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just want to add that again, the budget is fluid and if there are any mistakes, we will be coming back in June again for our final budget amendments before the end of the fiscal year as well. So that's also a part of how the budget works. Anything that's over or under will still be corrected before the end of the fiscal year.
I would like those account numbers of what we're taking the exact account number, what we're taking out, what account number we're adding, what the balance is and what the remaining is, please. I, I want it to be done. And then I'd also like to get it uh, a few days before our actual next city council meeting. I'd like to verify it with the treasurer so that we can make sure that all of our lines uh, match, please. Thank you, guys. I, I would like to see this from table unless you guys want to make a vote on it.
Go to table and it.
Councilman Saab, would you like to table, would you approve?
Sure, referring it back.
Further is back to administration. Uh, by councilman Saab, councilman Constant, will you second that?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, please to, to amend or to table this, or refer back to administration, I'm sorry.
Second.
To get the updated numbers. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Eye. Those oppose?
No.
Okay.
Tim Winsell.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer, no. Robert Coniston.
Yes.
Hassan Saad.
Yes.
Mo Bejun.
Yes.
Motion carries.
By the way, I don't want you guys to think that we're not going to approve this. We just want to make sure that the numbers are accurate. That's all. Thank you. We want to make sure that we pay everybody. It's just, it's to be done the right way. Next up is DPW Director Dancy, Wayne County CSO retention basin payment.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Derbonite City Council approved the payment of the Wayne County CSO retention basin operations and maintenance payments for a total of three million seven hundred seven thousand seven hundred eighty-six thousand sixty-two cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or the clerk to sign a necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account number five-nine-two-five-three-seven-nine-two-seven-one-zero-zero as outlined in ninety.
Second.
Motion made by councilman Saab, seconded by councilwoman Breyer. We missed you here, councilwoman. Can we also set the record straight, Mrs.?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Family emergency.
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
I've got to know more about this one. Retention basin.
Yes, retention basin. This was when Pletko was here, the, the city and, and the former administration, before this administration made an agreement. Um, you want me to give you the detail on it?
Well, I know the, I mean, is this the, the retention basin? It's a, but it says CSO also.
This is money we owe Wayne County for a retention basin that uh, collects a bunch of stormwater and sanitary sewage. Pumps it to the treatment facility. So, like I said, this is before I was here, but this is money that the city does contractually owe the county. Um, your guys' special city council has all the details apparently, so.
Is this the one on uh, ninety-four in Pelham or where is this?
I don't know the exact location of it. I think it's behind the中心.
Unfortunately. Unfortunately, um, no, so, so yes, the council chair is correct. An agreement was reached in nineteen ninety-four. And this guy was overseeing it. He wasn't even born yet, but um, he was. Uh, the um, uh, the TRB tra, uh, treatment retention basin was uh, agreed to. So uh, when you have uh, uh, CSOs combined sewer overflow, you have two options. You either retain them and, and treat them before you discharge um, um, you know, dur, during rain event, or uh, you separate. Uh, back then, the county, uh, the county manages the treatment for the entire Rouge Valley. So this is on the north side. Um, and it took a while to try to fund it because it's a small facility. It's mostly underground and it is physically located, I found it with that woman. Um, uh, right behind Hype. So there is a uh, red brick structure behind Hype facility. And uh, so the agreement was uh, to uh, build and operate a retention basin for uh, to accommodate, to prevent um, a sewage overflow into the Rouge River. Um, and, and basically so intercept, it will retain uh, the floodwater and um, so now I do have a whole lot of questions about, because I did, I spent a lot of time on this file, tried to figure out who agreed to what and for how long. So we are, we did sign a contract that says basically we, we will pay the county for to operate, maintain and to man the facility. And to, to the license to operate, the, the actual license, the um, the Eagle license is in both Derbonite Heights and Wayne County names. So we go every four years before Eagle and, and um, so that's why I had to learn um, quickly as to what happened. So apparently in the, in that contract, and I ran it by our attorney, uh, it, it gave the city the option. Uh, so we entered into nineteen, in the contract in nineteen ninety-four, the county built it and operated it continuously and they still do today. It's still operated by Wayne County Environmental Group today. But in nineteen four, uh, twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen. Uh, the prior administration uh, um, um, decided to investigate taking over um, the facility and operating ourselves as opposed to paying the county. Um, and um, so the agreement calls for, and again, I'm going from memory now. It says that you need to give the county a two-year notice if you are going to take over. You could, you could terminate and take it over. We can still do that today. But the agreement is good until thirty-four, twenty thirty-four. Um, um, so um, and the, and, and the prior administration did as in fact, um, uh, pass a resolution by council to take over and hire, um, I believe, uh, Waytrum to take over the operation. Uh, that agreement was passed by council. It was, it was signed by the, uh, prior mayor and, and everything, except it was never terminated. And no one ever told the county that we're taking over and terminating. So as a result, we didn't take it over. The county continued to operate today. Um, and the, the, the contract is valid. However, the city stopped making payments. Um, we met many times with the county and they, you know, they haven't, they fulfilled all their contractual obligation. As a matter of fact, every time it, it rains and, and the CSO is activated and we're doing treatment, they notify the city, they, they do everything the contract said to do. Um, and, and for some reason, they stopped making payments.
Well, we, we, I'm sorry, we'll get to the point where because we're, we're doing the CSO work that we won't need that anymore?
So, so um, as I, I said earlier, the options are when you have combined sewers like an older community like us. You can, you can do a, a retention basin and treat it in place and reduce it, or you can separate. Uh, that was the first one. The county um, um, said, let's treat in place and, and the city agreed to it in nineteen ninety-four. After that, all of our decisions are separate one time and you're done. So what I have now, we have six other CSO areas, right? So um, um, if you notice, in, in December, I brought back a, a finance plan. And we're on number three. We just started number three on the south end on Beach Daily. So ideally, what I like to do as we go forward before thirty-four is to put a plan to separate and never enter into a new contract. But have a plan to separate it. Just get the storm separate from sanitary and you're done. But until thirty-four, the contract is valid and they're doing the work.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. I just also will say briefly, I, I had a conversation about this. I was verified this money was actually put in a restricted fund. This money's been in a restricted fund for many years.
That's.
Uh, so this is not like hitting our GL, not coming from our, our fund balance or anything like that. Thank you. So it's, it's been there, so. Thank you so much. Motion made by, any other discussion?
I just wanted to make a correction. Not the full amount is in a restricted account. Only uh, two point eight million is in a liability account. Uh, which happens at the end of the fiscal year. So really, you would be paying a little bit from the water fund balance.
Alright, thank you.
A million one hundred. Or sorry, a little bit less, a million six hundred.
Thank you. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those oppose? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is DPW Director Dancy, who is very popular today, utility building, office, security, door installation.
Council chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Derbonite City Council approved the installation of the utility billing office door by Gandol Door for total cost not to exceed two thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Will be paid from GL account number five-nine-two-five-three-six-nine-three-one-zero-zero-zero as outlined in nine F.
Second.
Motion made by councilman, the honorable councilman Constant, seconded by the honorable councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on this?
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
So this is for the billing and water department. So I, I have two questions on this. Number one, you put a door, security door, but the counter is wide open. It feeds the purpose. That's number one. Number two, I remember a few years back, CDBG came forward and said that there was money available, we do all the countertops for them to be ADA uh, compliant. Where's that money?
Look, I, I will say, you know, that, that door is accessible for anybody to open.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not disputing that, but it doesn't have to be a twenty-five hundred dollar door.
Council chair.
You could just reach right in from the counter and open the door.
Um, council chair.
Yeah.
I think until we can secure the countertop, it's useless from a security door in when somebody can just go through. It's not.
We, we could say the same about the building department.
The building department has a regular door.
They have a regular door and have the thing.
This is a regular door.
No, there's a security door.
Department's got, theirs is more secure though. This glass was just put in during COVID. It's like temporary.
Uh, the building department actually has a door, just like the engineering office has a door.
Look, I, I, I think there's nothing wrong with adding the doors. The, the, the individuals that are working in this department feel for the safety of their well-being. Especially in times where rates are extremely high and people are complaining. Look, man, it's just, this could be a security, I mean, what, what, what are we waiting for? Somebody to come out here one day screaming and yelling and attacking one of the women inside that water department? Are we going to then be saying like, you voted no on something like this and all eyes are pointing at us? I, I know it's a tough decision, guys, it's safe.
Not a tough decision. It's just either do it right or don't do it at all.
Yeah.
I understand that, but this is the first step to doing it right.
Why don't you just get a place on everything instead of a door? But then if you do the countertop and it's not ADA uh, compliant, you're wasting more taxpayer money. But I remember CDBG.
CDBG and see if there's, the offer still stands.
I, I, council chair, can, can, hang on one second. I, I just want to say, and I'm going to leave it to you guys, to me. If, if somebody's calling it, if it's going to cost the taxpayer is two thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars for the sake of security, to me, there's no cost of that. And I know, this is uh, you know, this is a back and forth. And, and, and look, let me, let's adjust the elephant in the room, alright? Some of the council members go back there. I went back there. Councilman Saab has been back there.
I have not been back there.
I mean, regardless, they say, they, they said you've been back there.
I have not been back there.
I understand. I just said, they have said, councilman. I'm not saying you've been back here or not.
Well, they can say all they want. They're lying.
So that's where this is coming from. Okay? That, this is not coming from, uh, because it's been like this for, since nineteen sixty-three. Or since it's been uh, for, for however long we've used that for city hall. The truth is, the more I look about and look at this, like it's going to come a day where somebody's going to get very angry and storm through that door. They're going to say, you guys denied us. Now, does that open up a liability against? I mean.
Chair.
That's where I stand on this. But I'll hear from the rest of you guys.
Chair, councilman. You know, I, I walked right back there once, about a month ago and they said, councilman, please, you know, get permission to come back here. So, okay, I'm sorry. But you know, I mean, I'm in favor of the door, but maybe they should come to us with an entire package, the door and, and the, the glass. I mean, I'm all fair, I'm, I, I, I would, I'd probably vote no on just the, I'm, yes, on just the door right now. But I, I, you know, let's, let's, let's do the whole thing. I'm sure that, I'm not sure if you need bulletproof glass or just some kind of, you know, thick plexiglass that keep from, from jumping in there or some, some spindles or something, you know, I mean. Let's give it, let's do it, let's do it the, the, the right way all the way through. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to vote no, yes, on the door, but I mean, I'd like to see the whole thing secured. Either lock it off because you don't need the whole thing wide open, you know, just put some drywall up there or something and just some partial window or something or.
I'm sure we can figure something, that could be the next phase.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against first phase door, you know.
Any other discussion?
Is that the best price we got? Did we get three bids on that? Yeah?
Yeah, they're on there. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I totally agree with you for the safety of our people back there.
I like that. We got some agreements to you and I for once, huh? How about that?
I totally agree. I have that in the front section.
Any other discussion? Any none? All in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those oppose?
No.
And part, please take this to roll call.
Tim Winsell.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Saad.
No.
Robert Coniston.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer, yes. And Mo Bejun.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Council chair.
Yes.
I'd like to see them come back with a dip, a second phase to put more secure glass in there because that still bothers me. Someone would really want to.
It would be cheap to do a package and to do a door and do the glass. It'd make no sense to come back and pay more money.
You're right.
Next up is DPW Dancy, cross connection control program contract extension.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Derbonite City Council approved. Try this again, it doesn't, it doesn't air on. Derbonite City Council approved. Approved the extension of the contract with HydroCorp to operate the city's cross connection control program for an additional two years. In addition, authorize the mayor and the first to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in ninety.
Second.
Motion made by councilman Saab, seconded by councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council chair.
Sir.
What, what is the uh, cross connection control program?
Council, councilman, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You look at your back.
I did, but I, I mean, I wasn't really clear.
You're right. So uh, HydroCorp is a company that inspects and keeps track of any, in, across connections, any point in the drinking water system that non-drinkable water could get into it. So they inspect businesses, residential for any situation. The state requires you to inspect, right, a certain number of businesses, a certain number of backflow preventers where non-drinkable water could get into the drinkable system. And typically, there's not, uh, typically, there's just not enough staff or labor hours to fulfill all the requirements Eagle wants to be able to keep everybody on schedule, keep notices going out, keep enforcement, fill out the reports every year that you're, that you're actively trying to prevent any non-drinkable water from getting into your drinkable system.
What would be an example of that?
Uh, lot of uh, like utility sinks, might have a hose that sticks down in something where there's cleaners involved. Theoretically, it's happened once or twice. It's very rare, but you know how the state will, one thing will happen and then all the elected officials, everybody are like, we need to make sure everybody can't have this happen again. If you had a hose like in a solution somewhere and there was a fire or somebody was using a hydrant or you had a drop in pressure, you could back siphon non-drinkable water into the drinking water. Theoretically, it could go into the water main, go into somebody else's house who was then filling up their glass of water and then have non-potable water in the system. So, a lot of times irrigation systems.
Irrigation.
Typically could, if you have differences in pressure, that water that is non-potable could technically theoretically make it into the drinkable water system. So HydroCorp is just the main company that does these a lot. They have a big staff, so they go out and they check all of our commercial buildings. Residential, there's a little program that's set up. Most of the residential stuff's for like hose bibs. If you see, sometimes if you sell a house, you got to put the little vacuum breaker on your hose bib. It's happened and usually it happens in mountainous regions, right? If you got houses on high elevation, they have their hose, they're filling up a swimming pool, an old swimming pool with a bunch of algae and insects and bird feces in it. Fire, it'll suck through that hose into the system. And then before you know it, neighbors are getting sick, so.
Yeah, I, I wasn't really clear what that was, even.
Yeah. Cross connections, any point that a non-drinkable water could get into your drinkable system, so.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is DPW Director Dancy, purchase and payment of late sewers, replacement uh, loader.
Council Chair.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm Rose. Uh, the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of a water sewer specific loader via Sourcewell Contract Number zero one one seven two three dash CNH for a cost of two hundred four thousand five hundred eighteen dollars thirty-seven cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, treasurer to issue payment from account five nine two dash five three seven dash nine eight one dot zero 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 as outlined in nine H.
Second. Motion made by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by the Honorable Councilman Constance. Any discussion on this?
Council Chair, just wanna know which, is this, what accounts is coming out?
Yeah, five nine two is coming.
Water?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, five nine two is always water.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have DPW Director Dancy, purchase and payment replacement building and maintenance tool vehicle.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of a building and maintenance tool vehicle from Bruno Ford via MyDeal, contract number MA two four zero 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 one one nine three for the cost of sixty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars to be paid as follows. Thirteen thousand trade-in for the current out-of-service vehicle, fifty-three thousand one hundred dollars from GL account one zero one two six five nine eight one zero zero, one thousand dollars from GL account one oh one two six five nine eight one five zero zero zero, two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars be amended in using building and maintenance training budget. In addition, authorize the mayor and/or the controller or clerk to sign a necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payments outlined in nine, nine I.
Second.
Motion made by the Honorable Councilman Saab, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer. And I sound like Mr. McCaffrey. Any discussions?
Yeah, just wanna know where that GL account, fifty-three thousand coming out of.
That's the, uh, capital outlay for building maintenance. There was money in there, and then we took some from, for some reason, there was another capital outlay under five thousand that had a little bit in it. And then we moved the rest from the training budget. Cause there's, we got employees that, we probably won't use all that training budget this fiscal year.
Thank you. There's supposed to be balances with what's in that account? I know, it was supposed to be the backup. We asked for it. I know that this is time, time sensitive. I get it.
Yeah, no. I don't know why you didn't finish.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Library Director, Director, I'm sorry, Library Director McCaffrey, Library Budget Amendment, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendments to the bud, library budget. Increase seven three eight, seven three eight, A one A contracts increased by twenty-five thousand, increases from negative four thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars to twenty thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Item two is to increase seven three eight, seven three eight, eight two seven LTN contracts increased to five thousand dollars, increases from eight thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars to thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Item three is to increase seven three eight, seven three eight, eight oh two dues and numbers increased by five thousand dollars, increases from two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars to seven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Item four, increase seven three eight, seven three eight, seven four five utilities increased by fifteen thousand, increases from negative two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars to twelve thousand thirty-five dollars. Total increases negative fifty thousand. Or, is that negative fifty thousand, uh, Director?
No, it's fifty thousand, that's like that.
Okay, this dash, just that. Okay, total increase is fifty thousand dollars. Item five is de, to decrease seven three eight, seven three eight, nine eight one, capital outlay by ten thousand, decrease from sixty-one thousand fifty-eight dollars to fifty-one thousand to fifty-eight dollars. Next items, decrease seven three eight, seven three eight, seven oh seven, part-time by thirty thousand, decrease from two hundred and one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars to one hundred and seventy-one five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Final, last items, to decrease seven three seven, seven three seven, nine three one, repair and maintenance by ten thousand dollars, decrease from fifty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars to forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars, total decrease fifty thousand dollars as outlined in nine J.
Second.
Motion made by the Honorable Councilwoman Saab, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, and I wanna thank Director McCaffrey again. I see that you constantly, uh, respect and, and honor us, and when we request for something, you really deliver. And I really, really, really appreciate you uh, for that, Director McCaffrey.
Council Chair, I mean, just so people don't realize, this, this is a complete wash. We're increasing by fifty and decreasing by fifty, so it's like, oh, no, but thanks, Director, for making a decent honest.
Yes.
Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Parks and Recreation Directors, the
Bosnec.
The Bosnic.
Mr. Z.
Mr. Z, Parks and Recreation Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following amendment to the Parks and Recreation Budget as outlined in nine K from account one oh one dash six nine one dash nine eight one dot zero zero zero, which is capital outlay. The current budget is zero. The requested amount is sixty-three thousand seventy-five dollars. That's also the amended budget and the remaining balance after amendment. From account one oh one dash zero 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 dash six eight four da, or dot seven hundred, reimburse county parks, requested amount forty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars as the amended budget and the remaining balance after amendment. And then from account one oh one dash six nine one dash seven two eight dot zero 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 Supplies, current budget is thirty-three thousand. We are requesting a, a decrease of eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars, making the amended budget fourteen thousand five hundred and forty-nine, with the remaining balance after amendment of twelve thousand zero forty-four dollars. The notes are promotion twenty-four three four one and forty-four six hundred and twenty-four, that's the, the second one. That is from the twenty-one twenty-two Wayne County reimbursement, which will cover part of the marquee expenses. The grant paperwork must be submitted in June.
Second. Motion made by Council, Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Saab.
Number one is, uh, there is no money to give. Number two, this sign is, there's, there's a lawsuit on it. So I'd refer this back to the administration.
Um, just, just to give you an update on the, uh, situation at the sign, the county has, uh, communicated with me, asking why this has not been completed. Um, I explained, uh, a brief bit about the situation because we don't wanna lose, obviously, the entire grant money from the city or from the county. Um, so, the county has asked if we uh, want to try to get this re-approved again. This will be the third time.
Who are you speaking with, if you don't mind me from the county?
Uh, I would have to look at the, the.
Was it Commissioner Kenezak? Cause he's the one that gave us the money.
Right, it, it's, um, I, I would, I, I can't really say, cause I don't remember her name. Um.
Well, why don't you let me know and see, send me an email with them?
Okay, I just, but they're, what they want now is, um, all the details, some details on the legal. Uh, they contacted the county's corporate counse, council for advice on this. Uh, so they want the details from us. And then once they see that, they would like a uh, amendment or a motion by the entire council that, that you want them to try to extend it again, which they'll look at and then bring back to, um, to the county commission.
Council Chair, in Council Chair. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. In, in, um, in relation to what, um, uh, Director Bosnic and I have discussed, we have an offer we received today from the plaintiffs. I think we need to set a closed session as soon as possible. We, to consider the, uh, settlement offer from the plaintiffs. And that will, I think, affect our vote in a way. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Sorry, with regard to the comment that there is no money, again, the budget amendment is where the money would be coming from. So we would be getting a reimbursement of forty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-four from the county, and the remaining funds would come from supplies, which are not being spent this fiscal year per Directors Bosnic.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. And clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Mo Bejou?
No.
I vote? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director Zabinski.
The Bosnic.
Bosnic. Bosnic. I'm sorry, ma'am. I don't do it on, I don't do it intentionally. I know you seem a little frustrated, but I promise you I'm not doing intentionally. Um, Spirit Festival twenty twenty-five beverage sale.
Council Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of beer and wine from the Mc, Michigan Liquor Control Commission in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars to be sold at the Spirit Festival, June sixth through the eighth. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Parks and Rec Budget Account Number one oh one dash six nine one dash seven two eight dot zero 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 as outlined in nine L.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
I see that we're purchasing about ten thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Is that our, like, what we did in the past?
We have, we have no records at all on the beverage sales. We have, there's absolutely nothing exists. Um, so, so we have, we have no idea. Um, we worked with Westside Distributing, who do all the festivals, and they gave us the projected amount. So totally no risk. Whatever we don't sell, we get all of our money back.
Oh, okay, that's great. That's great. I didn't know that.
Okay, so we get all of our money back, whatever we don't sell. And they're giving us fifteen hundred dollars sponsorship on top of that.
Oh, that's great.
So it's a, a, a good program, everything, safety-wise, a hundred percent, um, you know, pre-mixed, everything's pre-mixed in cans. There's nothing that's being mixed. Um, all of, everything's controlled, so we control everything, cause it's all set by a separate beverage. All of our staff have been trained, are all certified now, um, uh, for all the alcohol management. We're bringing on additional people, so we run the alcohol area properly. It probably doesn't get any better than that, I can tell you. I've done eighteen festivals, never a problem. I've done probably thousands of events for the city of Dearborn.
My, my, my question was just the, the cost. Make sure we had an offer.
So if, if we were to sell everything, uh, we would make approximately twenty thousand dollars.
Awesome, so we'd make half.
Yep.
Okay. Um, my next question is, and I, I know I emailed you, I wanna bring it up here, but uh, you put out the signs that say Summerfest.
Yes, I did. Um, the the, um, to get the signs re, all remade in this short time, I risked two things. I risked not getting the signs up on the street, uh, in a, in a timely manner, which without the signs, even if they are slightly wrong, um, the more street time they are, the more people are preparing for it. If I risk it another one or two weeks, um, I, I really feel like it wouldn't benefit us, especially when the cost to redo those signs is gonna run about four thousand dollars. Um, and we wanna look at, you know, a new, a new, better-looking sign for the future, and something that, you know, will be just, you know, more reusable. We shouldn't really, really be spending this much money every single year for signs. And there's a lot of collateral signs to go along with this. There's smaller signs, and we have sponsor signs too, that, uh, are probably all incorrect also.
Directors, yeah, I just want you to know, I, I, I appreciate and I respect you trying to be like physically responsible for us. But unanimously, this council voted to name the Back to Spirit Festival. I just want you to know, like, following those things, like, this council body has somewhat of a say here.
Mm-hmm.
So seven council members are saying that there's a resolution now that called Back to Spirit Festival.
Mm-hmm.
We should be honoring them.
Mm-hmm.
Regardless of the signs cost worth of them. That's just my opinion.
Council Chair.
Yes.
Maybe we can get, you know, and, and charge pretty cheap to get a a sticker that says Spirit and then stick it on over, right over summer.
Yeah, cause it says twenty-four. We actually have the machine that will do that now. We didn't have it ready in time. MIS had some problems looking at the computer to our, our system and getting it to work. It took, uh, well, it just took, it took about a week and a half. It just was start, it just, it just started working on Friday. So we have the ability to do that now. And so we can put, you know, a, a, a patch on.
It says twenty twenty-four, by the way. It doesn't say twenty.
Yes, yes.
You know, and also, you know, put it like on an angle where you're, you're deliberately changing the name. Everybody knows you're not trying to just cover everything up, make it look like, hey, the name has changed from.
And that was my, my thought also, uh, that we, we can correct that that way. Um, we just wanted to get them up and get the word out. All of our collateral, uh, advertising, Facebook ads, everything all has new, all the new information. We had to change a lot of contracts to say Spirit in it, so it's been a little bit of a process.
I appreciate you.
Okay.
Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Police Department Overtime Budget Amendment.
No.
No.
Nine.
Oh, Parks and Recreation Directors, Spirit Festival twenty twenty-five express summary.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the expense summary budget for the two thousand twenty-five Spirit Festival in the amount of fifty-one thousand one hundred ninety thousand seventy-six cents. The Spirit Festival is found, is funded out of two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Parks and Recreation Budget one oh one six nine one eight nine one zero 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 as outlined in nine.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Police Chief Hart. Police Department Overtime Budget Amendment.
Hart?
How about Hadar?
Hey, guys, I'm sorry. Hadar, please forgive me.
Getting tired.
Police Chief Hadar. It's, it's, it's actually hot in here. It's really, really muggy in here. Director Dancy, where's he at? Can we see him? We're gonna work together.
Over there.
I think. All right, tell you, I went around.
The motion read?
He's running walk in front of us.[1668.91] Guys, I, I don't even end the motion review.
Um.
Council, shall I read it? Would we want to read?
If I can't get a motion here, it's gonna be dead on arrival.
Alrighty.
Alright, dead on arrival.
Hmm.
Sorry, chief. Next up is Police Chief Hadar, Police Department Auto Auction.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the auction of the following police vehicle, department vehicles by J T Quavo. Two thousand twenty-four Ford, two thousand four Ford four-door.
Do I gotta give the VIN number on here? I don't think so.
Nineteen ninety-eight Chevy pickup truck, two thousand three Ford Tourist, two thousand ten Ford Escape, nineteen ninety-nine Cadillac Seville. The money will go into the street forfeiture account as outlined in nine O.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Honorable Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Police Chief Hadar purchased and payment of to de-escalation simulator.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and the payment of Milo Range Theater, one hundred and eighty interactive judgment and de-escalation simulator for the amount of ninety-two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and seventy-five cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign a necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one oh one, three zero zero, nine six two, zero 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 as outlined in nine P.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chief, uh, what account is this coming out of?
It says a code purchase hundred, it's coming out of the account one oh one, three hundred, nine six two point zero zero, which is state money that M Coles has granted us.
Okay. M Coles, thank you.
Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yes.
I'm really interested in this, uh, I've always been a fan of de-escalation. Public and at home, everywhere we're, I mean, what exactly is this? Is it a video simulator?
Yes, yes. And we use it for, uh, training for active shooters, barricaded gunmen, use of force situations, de-escalations and things like that. It's, uh, it'll give you like a real scenario, live scenario. You're armed with a simulator weapon and you go to, uh, like real live police runs.
What about like a, 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 a traffic stop?
We have those also.
Will be in it, have been included?
Yes. Yes.
Then how about just like in, deal with this, uh, um, like a, a, say homeless person on the street?
Correct, there's a simulator that has a scenario with a homeless person at a park that's at a bench, sleeping overnight, gets armed.
Awesome, that's good, yeah, good deal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman, why don't you go, they can use you as a trainee if you want.
Any other discussion? We'll bring him in first.
Yeah, yeah. No, you won't.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Police Chief Hadar, purchase and payment of vector scheduling software.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of vector scheduling software for the Police Department for a total of twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars for a three-year period. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller or the clerk to sign a necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one oh one, three hundred, eight one eight, zero 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 as outlined in nine Q.
Second.
Council Chair? By Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Yes, Council Chair, I actually spoke to Lieutenant, Sergeant Shugs about this. This is actually what will replace, uh, our Code Red. It's actually half the price. And it offers a lot more features, scheduling and all that. So it's actually way cheaper. We pay eleven thousand dollars a year for Code Red. This is half the price.
Hmm. Any other discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, petition from citizen D roll, and then ordinance and resolution, Mayor Bill Bazey, Downriver Utility Waste Authority, DUA, amend articles of incorporation of the law.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution regarding the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority known as DUA, amended articles of incorporation, and authorize the mayor and clerks to sign the resolution on behalf of the city as outlined in eleven A.
Second, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Excuse me?
No.
Okay. Clerk, take it to roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Hunsad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Tom Winsell?
No.
Moby Dun?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Actually, I want to vote no with Councilman.
Five, one.
Next up is Councilman Sob, extension of the resolution establishing a twelve-month application stay.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the extension of the resolution establishing a twelve-month stay on the application stays outlined in eleven B.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yep, Roger.
Um, I believe that I opposed it last, last one, last year when it was brought up, but I think it needs to go to the planning commission first. But we do have our ordinance H twenty-three dash oh three, which is the Gateway Overlay District. Um, from what I read is section thirty-six sixty-four, in the Taylor Dearborn Heights Gateway Overlay District was intended to create a uniform set of land use regulations along the Taylor, Dearborn Heights border to help develop both communities. Um, if for twenty years, we signed and approved it, I believe that on the section thirty-six ninety-three, the table of permitted uses, we have in there automobile dealerships. We have in there car washes. We have in there approved by us, um,
Thank you.
Uh, junkyards, scrap yards, and motor vehicle towing, outdoor storage of materials or equipment. So we've approved this already. It's an ordinance. I don't think we could change the ordinance for the resolution, but I think it should probably be tabled and brought to the planning.
Thank you. This is just the second time we've been going for this renewal. We have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Roger. Next up is temporary food truck cart license renewal application for Hot Wheels Grill.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the temporary food truck cart license renewal application for Hot Wheels Grill as outlined in thirteen A.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, any discussion? I will say, I had this food truck, believe it or not, I was on a bike ride with a resident. Well then, we were hungry, we stopped. Not that, I will say it out loud, it was Angelo Vinegas. And, uh, we stopped on our bikes and we ate, we ate there. Really good. And so I know now that they're, they're, they're also going to potentially be moving the location, uh, and that's what this is. So they've already had their renewal with us, they're just coming back for us, and I respect them for that. I thank them for saying, hey, I'm, I want to move my location, if that's okay with you guys. Um, because the area I'm not in is probably not doing the best, that's why I want to see if I want to give another opportunity. So I respect them for that very much. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have temporary food truck cart license renewal application for Catria Mia.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the temporary food truck cart license renewal application for Cat-
Catria Mia.
Catria Mia is outlined in thirteen B.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? I will say something. This might be the best food truck I've ever had in my entire life. This is the best authentic Mexican food I've ever eaten. Uh, but she's from Venezuela, but she speaks very, very good, uh, and it is unbelievable.
They are Spanish.
It really is.
Venezuela, Spanish.
Is it?
Big Spanish, yeah.
All right. Please forgive my.
He didn't do good in geography.
All right. But yeah, really, if you have not gone and tried this, I think it's, what have they been open for three years now? It's very, very, very good. Yes. You know what?
Uh, Haas and Telegraph gas station.
Yep.
Cross street from Mike's, uh.
You know, Vince, I think you owe me lunch.
Me too.
Yeah, I think you owe me lunch, and it's not cheap there. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have everybody's favorite, Antonio.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for Antonio's Cusina Italiano at two six three five six four as outlined in thirteen C.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yes.
I was just sitting there. Everything was really clean, restroom was really clean. Uh, Lord, I peeked back into the kitchen area, everything's cleaning, people had the gloves on and there was, it reached my approval for the license renewal.
Thank you, thank you. Any other, I'm still waiting for you to go to the gallery, but thank you. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Before we move forward, I am, I, I, Matty, if you can step up real quick. What line item is this? It was for the budget amendment. Yes. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know that Matty actually let me know that was the only clerical error that he made in that budget amendment. So if you guys wanted to go back, be able to pay those individuals, I'm okay with that, but that's up, that's up to this body. You guys won't do that. Yeah, I know we tabled it because of a lot of the bright information. He went back to the office, reviewed it.
It's only forty thousand dollars for that line items that we can mark up and adjust. So it starts at forty, minus fifteen, it would be twenty-five.
Uh, then of course, am I allowed, are we allowed to go back?
Sure.
Okay, and that was, uh, what is it?
Dispendable.
Dispendable rules. Motion to suspend the rules and then.
Okay, can I get a motion to suspend the rule? Council Chair, put a motion to suspend the rules, Councilman Sob, seconded, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Madam Clerk, what's that line item? It was before nine K.
There she comes.
Man has it.
There was, uh, nine D.
Uh, yeah, yes, comptroller's office, yeah.
It's the fourth item on the table. It's one, city-owned property, one oh one, two hundred and nine.
Line item ninety.
Ninety.
Ninety, yes, item ninety, and the amended line is the fourth item on the decrease accounts.
It's okay. Council, you want to go to read the, because you read it first.
Council Chief, I, um, put a motion that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the budget amendment necessary to cover the upcoming payments as outlined in nine D with, uh, reduction of item, line item number four.
Yep.
And that was forty thousand.
That's forty thousand, uh, as the current budget. The amended amount would be fifteen, then a new amended budget would be twenty-five.
Thousand. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman, Councilwoman Breyer. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Council Chair? Can I ask Matty to give us a corrected version so we can put it online?
I'll put it, I'll give you a corrected version when I get back to the office right now. Thank you.
Yes.
How many vendors are, does this involve?
How many vendors? Um, I don't have the exact list, but the treasurer has a list that she can provide to you, uh, and I can let her know to give you that list. Majority, majority of the payments are building, maintenance, repair items and truck repairs that the building maintenance needs. And then we have a few contractual services for the council department. That's, that's where the majority comes from.
Thank you, Matty.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you going back and fixing that.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, Matty is one of the hardest workers in the city, honest to God. I see him here on Sundays.
Yeah.
Parked working here.
Thank you. Next up is business license renewal, Applebee's.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
I'd like to refer, I'd just like to refer this back to administration.
Okay. Okay. Um, you want to refer this back to administration?
To Corporation Council.
Particularly to Corporation Council. Okay, motion, uh, to refer this back to our Corporation Council, motion made by Councilman Sob. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
The what?
What are we referring back?
Uh, Applebee's is, uh, a little license, um, the clerk, I'd like you to speak on it.
Yeah, they had a deficiency for their annual liquor license review, and I'm not sure if Corporation Council got back to you as it was requested when the, we reviewed that in March. It was supposed to get back with you in thirty days. On those businesses that had a deficiency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, deficiency on their liquor license?
Yeah, during the review, that means that the departments, you know, building, police, fire, they all did a, a, you know, a review of the business. And Applebee's had a deficiency, and we requested Corporation Council to, um, prepare a letter or give us some type of direction on, on what it was.
Council Chair, I didn't prepare a letter, but if, if, if it's something, maybe you can just reiterate what the, uh, I'll look at the deficiency again, and then we can send them a notice. Um, the liquor commission will also notify them. I don't know if they've gotten in contact with you, Madam Clerk, if they've fixed whatever the issue was.
No, the, the motion was, um,
I get it.
Council that, um, to receive, note and file the liquor review and direct Corporation Council to contact and or draft a letter to businesses with a deficiency, which this was one, if the department that cited the deficiency has not already done so. Requesting the deficiency be addressed within thirty days of said letter and to provide an update to City Council. That's why I asked if City Council had received that. And they, they haven't, you're welcome.
Thank you. So we'll refer this back to Corporation Council by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Carreras Business License Renewal.
Council Chair?
Yep, Councilman?
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Carreras Italiana, uh, six-five, sixty-five North Telegraph as outlined in thirteen.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by the Honorable Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
That's fair.
Went by there, and I, I actually did, uh, because, you know, there was some, there were some situations with, uh, adjoining business, you know, next apartment, I mean, I, I looked there, that was resolved, and it wasn't their fault, but I went around the back and it was pretty, you know, really clean around the back of that place. I was, I was surprised how well cleaned they kept there, and, and inside was really nice and the waitstaff was really pleasant too.
Thank you.
They've been clean for years.
Yeah, they're clean, real clean operation.
Any other, any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Again, thank you, Councilman Winsell, for continuing your efforts and making sure that these businesses are up to code. And, and I mean that, I really do.
Well, I enjoy doing it.
Good job. Uh, next up.
Free meals? No, I don't.
There were some reasons.
Next up is business license renewal, Fairlane Eagle.
Council Chair?
Three eight, six one.
Council Chair, I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Fairlane Eagles number thirty-eight, sixty-one at two zero seven three A, Van Born as outlined in thirteen O.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yep.
I was in there, and, um, they're doing some, continually doing work, and my hat goes off to the auxiliary portion of the Eagles. The women there take care of that, that building immaculately. Everything's really clean in there. And also, um, I like to, uh, my hat goes off to the Fairlane Eagles, uh, thirty-eight, sixty-one. Uh, uh, they allowed, um, my nonprofit Jamie's kids to work along with them and adopt the highway. We adopted, we adopted the highway cleaning from, uh, Van, on Telegraph Road from Van Born to Michigan Avenue. And a couple of weeks ago, we did a cleanup program through M dot, where you go out there with volunteers, you clean up the, the median and bag it all up, and M dot comes this following Monday to pick it up. Uh, they're, they, they contribute to the community, they sponsor things, all, all kinds of things in the community, and then they do this cleanup program also with M dot, adopt the highway.
Thank you, man. And I saw, I know the work efforts that you and Jamie's kids and the volunteers did. You, thanks, my hat goes out to you and your family and everything that you guys have done.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, renewal license, business license renewal, Happy Wealthy one sixty-eight LLC.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
With the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Happy Wealthy six, one six eight LLC at fifty-six eighty North Telegraph as outlined in thirteen G.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Uh, any discussion, Councilman?
Council Chair, I, I, I failed to get to this business. So I, I rely, relying on our, our, our directors to tell us that there's eight problems there.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
What type of business is this? I'm just curious. Happy Wealthy? Okay, yeah, all right. Check it out.
Is it yours?
Word and Telegraph. Word and Telegraph.
What is it?
Restaurant?
Yes.
The restaurant by, um, Mulholland Lane, by the G F S.
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, yes, yes.
I think it's an old Rose.
We're going there tomorrow.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is members of the public and we're gonna take comments from Councilman. Go ahead, Councilman Wansel.
Okay, just, I, all I wanna do is uh repeat what I said earlier, uh, thanks for everyone that helped out with our family fun night this past weekend and. I'm promoting the Durbin Heights Watershed Stewart Commission. Uh, rain garden maintenance and Ecorse Creek Cleanup Project this Saturday, May seventeenth, nine AM. The twelve noon at the Richard A Young Center at fifty-four hundred McKinley Street, Durbin Heights, four eight one two five. Uh, it's a great family fun activity, uh, weeding, planting, raking, spreading mulch. Uh, we did run into a little bit of problem uh with the city sponsoring our mulch, but we're working on that, me, I'm working with several different departments to see if we can get the mulch paid for. But uh, I, I hope everyone shows up, it's a great time, we have.
I'll, I'll pay for it.
There you go, he's got money.
I'll pay for it.
Well, it's, it's, uh, I, I called around and I, I went through, I, I used every connection, I found different businesses, the, the District Seven, uh. School District works with a company Carefree Landscaping, their, their supply yard on Trenton. And they gave me a price because of our situation, that's like one-third of the normal price. And uh, the price for the mulch is for the twenty-five yards, I believe it is, is uh, five hundred dollars.
I'll pay for it.
That's great. Thank you, sir, thank you. Thank, Councilman Sob, thank you. God bless you.
As long as the chief comes on, helps.
Saturday, this Saturday, May seventeenth.
I would love to, but this week is Police Week.
Yeah, the uh, you know, this, we've had the, the Fire Department, Police Department there every year and, you know, the, the members volunteering there every year and.
And the clerk and the council members.
Yep. Our biggest, the biggest job, you know, we get the kids out there and they're pulling all the weeds and doing all that stuff, the biggest job is hauling. Twenty-five yards of mulch and wheelbarrow at a time in, into position and that's a, that's a good workout. Anybody wanna skip the gym that day, show up?
You need a wheelbarrow? I got an axel from.
He hasn't returned it.
Any other discussion?
It's important we get that mulch down, to keep the weeds down and the.
Yeah.
Water from the roof of the building drains into those uh.
Three areas.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, for people that know it, a, a rain garden in this particular case, there, there are two massive rain gardens, they were built about uh twelve years ago. And all the rainwater, instead of going down into the storm drain, adding to the flooding problem, the rainwater goes into these rain gardens, which are made up of. Native, native Michigan plants with massive root systems and high trans- transparency, tran- transfer, transparency is, it's where. Water evaporates through the leaves. And it keeps all the water out of the, 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 the storm system and at the Richard A Young Center also, there's a special parking lot that was built at the same time. It doesn't, it, it, it's got one drain for overflow, but all the water that this parking lot gets rained on goes right through the parking lot. Into the ground, doesn't, it doesn't go into the storm system at all.
Be honest, we had the bust area last year.
You guys, you guys are the best area.
Thank you.
It's just the cleanness.
We have the melt pods there for the.
It's fun, it's, it's a fun project. It's a nice photo opportunity too, because it's so beautiful, the, the scenery, the grand, the plants and trees and stuff and. Go there, take, take your family, take some pictures, take some campaign pictures there, it'd be great.
The chief is gonna come with some cadets and uh, they're gonna have their own crew.
He, he, he came through for us a family fun night, you know, he came through with cadets.
In charge of my schedule, so I'll see you there.
Okay.
I guess Roger volunteered too right now, so.
Yep. Alright guys, let's go on next, please, thank you. Anyone else wanna give comments?
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
Um, just wanna say, you know, happy National Police Week to our police officers, you know. Honestly, I did a ride along with them, they're so overworked and so underpaid, I'll say that every time I can. Um, and hopefully with everything, we're getting, we're gonna have a, you know, a world-class police department, one of the best departments in the nation. In the years to come. I'll say that and then uh. You know, please cut your lawns.
Yeah.
Cut your lawns, please. Cut your weeds. Cut your lawns.
Yeah, they need it.
I mean, some of these houses look ridiculous. Director, please issue as many tickets as you possibly can, two, three times a week to the same house if possible. Um, also, please tell your kids to slow down.
Oh, yeah.
Our neighborhood, they're just, they're dragways, you know, we can't have every police officer on every road, but please. Tell your kids it starts at home, tell your kids to slow down. Um. You know, some of them drive and have them cut the lawns, clean in front of the house. Honestly, they're gonna kill somebody or, or they're gonna kill themselves, so. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any other council members? This is an al- this is not an announcement, this is comments to council.
Council Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to, wanna thank our police officers, a Police Officer Week. Please, everyone, slow down, you know, our streets are narrow, cars are parked, if a child darts out. We all know uh what happened to Joey Smith at uh R D in Annapolis. And we don't wanna repeat that tragedy, so. The weather's beautiful, a lot of people outside, please drive carefully.
Thank you. I will briefly um, just touch up on a couple of things. One is, uh, we, we miss Councilman Ahmad. This meeting was a little different without him, uh, and I wish he was with us, but he is enjoying a cruise with his family and he asked me to give his sincere's and. Tell you guys that he missed being here at this meeting today. Secondly is uh, we're gonna talk about reckless driving. I've been doing a lot of door knocking and I, I swear to you. I was so scared from this loud muffler that was going so fast. And all I could think about like. There was a dog running, was it my, you know, like, my dog sometimes runs out of the house and I chase it. I'm not looking left and right and if I come out of nowhere and that car cannot stop, it's killing me. It was so loud and big and fast and I just kept thinking to myself like. Why did we get here? How did we get here? The truth is, Chief, like, I know that we know, we have different units. We need to figure out how to have a traffic unit back in the city of Durbin Heights. And not, oh, well, this is where we're at and we're short staffed, no, man, like. That means we need to take everybody in the police department and put them back out on the road, put everybody back on the road. I mean, you might get grievance, but look, the good news is. What do we tell our residents? We're gonna get grievance? I mean, like, we need to figure this out and if that means we have to put traffic back out on the roads, put traffic back on the roads, we have to figure it out and I don't mean our major road. You know, our neighborhoods, on a Saturday, I should see cops in all the neighborhoods, maybe that's just like wishful thinking, but I would love that. Yes, I agree, um, with our T S P program, we've been moving our officers around throughout the city to target uh enforcement. Through the neighborhoods, uh, I mean. For example, right now, you got one of the best officers on the department who issues a lot of tickets sitting over there and that guy, okay, so. Yeah. I mean, you're, you're, you can send her back on the road. She's here to protect you guys, but when she goes out there, she gets it in. And if you drive on Ford Road and you don't, you don't have insurance or you're driving reckless, I guarantee you, she's gonna tow your car. Can you promise me we're gonna have at least five cars towed tonight? If they're reckless driving? Yeah, so, we're trying and, and we, 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 we plan on doing something next week in a neighborhood with our T S P. For example, we're gonna put some spotters out there and then we're gonna do some traffic enforcement. Thank you so much, Chief. So, well, we're trying, I mean, the T S P, we can, like you said, if you identify an area where it needs, it needs to be addressed, we can shift our focus there. Thank you so much, Chief, and then also, I, I wanna say like, like many of you here, we wanted our fire station to be. Up and running and the plans to happen, but the truth is like, in ten years. I plan on still being here. I don't wanna look back and say, well, I voted and I pushed it to the golf course when. Just three years ago, I promised everybody, including Councilman Wansel, you're not gonna get anything built on this golf course. While I'm on council. You know what, like, seeing that this administration's kinda pushing us onto it, really scared you.
Yeah.
It was, it was, that actually really bothered me and so, do we need to put forward something onto the ballot where it says? Let the residents decide if somebody wants to go out or do we gotta put a resolution forward for that sake? I mean, the truth is, tonight. Four people would have voted yes. You'd, you'd have, you'd have somebody built on there and, and that we'd, and everything we promised and said we weren't gonna do was gonna happen and that's, that's alarming to me. Really is, because like. It's a Don Ross Golf Course, we said we wanna see thirty-six holes, we went through R F, you know, R F Ps and. We're gonna make this place the, you know, destination golf courses and it is right now. But it's gonna get bigger and better and I, I think I spoke to Jason and he said they've been so busy. Who knows, maybe we can open up another nine and eventually, who knows, in ten years, open up another nine. We can't, we can't, we really can't, I, I, I don't think the solution is to go ahead and build on the golf course. I'm a hard no on that. Um, and, and I'm gonna stay a hard no and really, my fear is not just 'cause I said I wasn't gonna build on the golf course, but my fear is this. I have to stop sinking. Who's gonna say anything? Twenty years, who's gonna come back? They're gonna fight for the same issue, no. Next thing up is, you know, I think D P W Director and, and the staff in D P W. Because they're, they've been working with no overtime. Zero overtime and they're still kinda trying to do their best, they're putting their best foot forward. Some of these roads are just so hard. Like I, like I, I, I drove the other day and my car just like, like a thunder. I couldn't keep hold of my, 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 and I was going twenty miles per hour, I couldn't keep hold of my uh steering wheel, it was so, and it was on Annapolis Street, at the corner of Annapolis and. On, on the corner of Annapolis and Salford. Right there runs into Cornell and Annapolis, it's like a triangle. My car just went boom, 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 I think I sent it to you, Mr. Deep, that's the point, insane. Um, and so I, I really wish we can get that really resolved, our roads are very, very ugly, I know that we have limited funds. Uh, I know that, you know, some of the roads, like our major roads, are taking up a lot of the funding, but on our local roads, I know we have local funding. Major funding and local funding. Let's be able to, let's, let's capitalize on a lot of those and. And I think it really goes back down to maintenance, we didn't maintain these certain potholes over the last year or two and they went from this to this. We gotta do better. Um, and, and if. There's no way this road broke up the way it broke up in the last two years. We're failing on that and we, I don't mean to point fingers and blame anybody, but we gotta do better. Uh, that's, that's really all I got for you. Any other councilmen? Councilman?
Yeah, I wanna piggyback on you, how you saying that we need to start enforcing the speeders. But the bottom line is, you can give out as many tickets as you want, once it gets to court. We gotta have the courts get on board too and enforce them.
Quickly.
I mean, because if, if you're wasting your time writing tickets, that's doing nobody good if the courts are just letting people go. Also too, I like the idea of impounding the cars.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to see some kind of schedule where, you know, first time it's impounded, of course, the owner on title has to come get the car. Second time, maybe keep it like a three-day waiting period, so, you know, every time i- if they keep getting caught. It takes a longer amount of time till it gets to the point, it's an inconvenience to them, if it's the same car, the same driver.
Well, I think it's also an inconvenience when you are impounding it, but we have to be careful on like illegal search and seizures, like we can't seize a vehicle. Based on somebody's crime rate unless a court is actually men, you know, issuing out that warrant. Um, but I think even when you do impound it, I mean, that, I don't care what court does, the extra five hundred dollars to go get your vehicle out and the inconvenience, they're gonna think twice. Recklessly driving in our city.
If we save one life doing that, it's worth it.
So we, we do have Wayne County scheduled to come in and train our officers on how to forfeit vehicles for drag racing. And reckless driving, so that isn't, it's in the process of happening.
Perfect, thank you so much.
And when that happens with the drag racing, they've gotta pay a percentage value of the vehicle to get it back, they gotta pay tour and storage. If it's a twenty, thirty thousand, they usually take, when we were doing it, we'd do like five thousand, seven thousand, get your car back. Thank you.
I like that.
Alright, where's that money go?
Our pocket?
Any other comments? See, now we're gonna go to announcements.
Chair.
Okay.
I have just one question, Roger.
Yes.
You said that, where would that money go? Would it go to the courts or go back to the city?
Well, when the prosecutor, the prosecutor's office has the authority to do it with the forfeiture, so they would get a percentage, the, 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 the city would get a percentage of it.
The city?
Right. You know. I, I wasn't kidding when I said we, we seized twenty thousand cars, prosecutor's office got four million.
Get out there.
We need to put them at de-escalation, uh.
Yeah.
Then uh, we're gonna go to announcements to Councilwoman Brier.
Okay, and one more comment too, uh, we had a nice, uh, the second time affair. Lynn, Lynn was there on Saturday, we had the uh, people who have lost children. And it was put on at uh. Yeah, O W F S. Turnout wasn't great, but it took two hankies to get through five ladies talking about family members' children. Uh, and it was uh very well done and the ladies from D seven uh did, did a great job, Lynn was there. And uh. Our treasurer and myself and uh, it, it was a great turnout, it was very nice on their part and they made a nice brunch for everybody too. Was beneficial. Now to comments?
Yep.
Or to announcements? Okay, the important one is May twenty-second, which is a Thursday, seven PM, the South Durbin Heights Civic Association will be hosting. Speakers, um. That are state reps at seven o'clock PM. Uh, that's, that's Lynn and we should have uh Sri come as well or someone from his office that will talk to us about what's happening. That applies to our area here, so you'll be free to ask them all kinds of questions. So please attend, we need a good audience for our state reps. At three three, three five, South Beach Daily.
Thank you.
And uh, then we have on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, because the days don't fall the same. The Ecorse Creek has their meeting at six PM, same location. And then there's one other thing that Mr. Zaboznick can give us details on, they still have tickets for that lantern thing at the zoo in Grand Rapids. If people are interested, it's a three-hour trip each way, but we're gonna make some special stops and play bingo and. The time will pass and it'll go into the evening and to see the lanterns at night should be very nice. So, get with uh either one of the senior senators, buy those tickets and let's have a good time.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the administration? Yep, right.
It's gonna be real quick. Two days ago, it was a very special person's birthday. So I think we all should wish her a happy birthday, we never see her, she's always behind the camera or behind the wall, it was Angela's birthday.
Happy birthday, Angela. How you doing, sir?
Hello, uh, Council Chair and Mayor, just wanna talk about a couple of items. Uh, first off, uh, this Saturday, all day at J F K Library, we will be honoring staff and volunteers. Uh, the past well and service of the city. Over the years, we have had some very good people work with us. And bring literacy and community spirit, uh, we will be sharing and having discussions around one PM. Light snacks will be served, uh, so please come out and join us. Uh, also, coming later on, Saturday, June twenty-first, from eleven AM to three PM at Carolyn County Library is our summer reading kickoff. Join us to see ventriloquist Richard Paul at eleven AM and the Reptarium Interactive Zoo at two PM. Uh, this is going to kick off about six weeks of uh action-packed programming, got a lot coming up during the summer reading. Uh, the program is welcome to all ages, so come on out. Uh, thank you, uh, thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you so much. Alright, announcements from the administration being on other, we'll open up the public comment. Go ahead, ma'am, how you doing? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you got three minutes.
I'm Renee Murna, I live in Annapolis and what else did you ask me? I have lost track, I'm sleepy. It's warm in here, I'm telling you, it's like.
Thanks, Director Nancy.
I have a, I have quite a few notes that, that I wrote, but this has been a very interesting meeting, so um, I'm gonna start with Tom. So, I'll, I'll give you an easy one. The citizens, like, do you still have that volunteer organization where somebody can volunteer, do they need grass cutting, weeding, something like that?
Labor labor?
Yeah, I need to get in touch with you so I can do some weeding and some grass cutting and stuff. Okay, Spirit Festival, I, thanks for addressing that, 'cause I saw the sign on Telegraph today, but I'm one of those people that have to see the sign weeks in advance. And remind me every day, then I show up if I remember it's there, so, good job on that. Um, couple of things that, uh, that I was interested in, um, the, uh, I better start with the easy one. Okay, paid tuition, um, I believe that our company has paid tuition, but if you, but you have to be there five years after. You know, you have, there's a time that you have to be vested in the company or you have to pay it all back. So, that might be an idea. Um, auto pen. Whose signature? Whose signature was on that paper? That was the big question of, did the mayor sign this paper? Was it an auto pen? Did somebody sign for him? That was, that was pretty good, it's good to investigate that and hopefully somebody will follow through with that to find out if it was a legitimate sig- signature on that page. Um, also, uh, real estate money, where's the real estate money? We signed the contract with the real estate companies, is that not part of the budget or any of that kinda stuff?
We never signed one.
You didn't? Oh, you, we didn't? Okay, well. Okay, that was to answer that question, uh. So door, um, what about moving the water department to a different areas that has a door or something like? I just noticed that the animal, animal control or in this place moved, so what if they go over there?
Not big enough.
Instead of buying a door?
Not big enough.
Okay, so, and then, um, the, oh, here's. I'll save the big one for last, but, so Carreras, so I noticed that, that they got their license like renewed real quick, boom, boom, boom. And um, I'm wondering whatever happened to the sewer study, like, who put this, who put the grease in the sewer, you know? And it's like, the other guy that tried to get his license renewed got all kinds of like uh backlog. And because of a sewer, it's being blamed for grease in the sewer, but then. Carreras, which is right next door to them, nobody told us what is the result of the sewer study, did they, did, who's, like, what kinda grease is in there? So anyway, just, just to note that how that one got passed really quick, but the other poor guy was like penalized for a long time.
Council Chair, the Carreras, they, they weren't involved in the, the uh grease issue. It was, it was a neighboring business.
Right, but what I'm saying is that they're next door, so that sewer could be. Either one of them, because they're sharing the same sewer. That's what I'm.
What she's saying is, it could've been Carrera that was doing it.
Right.
But you didn't have questioned Carrera, we questioned the other company, she said.
There was video showing who actually poured it in, it wasn't Carrera's. And there is a thing through Wayne County that you can foil, which I did, and you will find the results, I just don't wanna say here.
Okay, because that's what I, I had asked for previous ones, like, where's the, the final, where's the? Okay, because that's what I, I had asked for previous ones, like, where's the, the final, where's the proof of who put the, the stuff down?
Council, Council Chair, may I respond to her?
Go ahead.
The, uh, we put an ordinance together, 'cause I've talked with the plumbing, um, inspector from Dearborn Heights and as well as other cities, and we put a fats, oils and grease in response to what Ms., uh, Councilwoman Maxwell pointed out, which Dearborn is doing, a lot of other new business coming into the city is requiring to keep a record of the grease and everything else, so th- this doesn't happen. So it is a proactive step that we have to look at, the ordinance, uh, but we've put it together, which will give, like, Tom, when he said he goes into restaurants, when you go in, you'll see a logbook every week, they track what the grease and what's being done in each restaurant. Which will prevent this being dumping into the system.
And that, and the only reason I ask is because when I first started with the city council, that was one of the first issues that I, that I came across, 'cause I was a novice for city council, and Bruggerati was, you know, they were right up front and center for a, a, of license renewal. And that's what the first controversy was, so it just kept sticking in my mind that I never heard what was the final thing. And, um, let's see, what was the last thing? Oh, the fire station, last thing. So, w- two words, eminent domain, pick a property, take over the houses, just build it there. Eminent domain, I say do it, they did it to my grandma on the south end of Dearborn, she loved it, she moved to a better house in Dearborn, East Dearborn. I say eminent domain, that's it, thank you very much, and hey, good job, you guys.
Thank you, have a great day. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Hi, everybody, Sue Kaminsky, Amboy, Dearborn Heights. Um, few things, first off, thank you, um, Council, uh, Mo and Tom in particular for keeping your word about not building on the golf course. We had asked for a restriction and couldn't get anything put in writing. Um, I'm part of Golfie Manor Civic Association, it's the oldest civic association that's active in the state of Michigan. And it's five hundred and two homes, we don't publicize a lot, we have a meeting once a month on Monday night via Zoom. We have a newsletter that goes door to door six times a year. It's a very active civic association, um, that does a lot of activities. We just hit a euchre night, we do things for the kids, so, um, it, it matters to us, because if there was building there, we would potentially have flooding. And frankly, I think that the city, if they were thinking about putting something there, their due diligence would've been to get an independent nat weed trim water engineer to look at the feasibility. It wasn't done, shame on you, sorry. Um, the other thing is, um, thank you to the police officer, and I can't remember your name, I think, is it Simpkins?
Anthony.
Joker, oh, it wasn't you Friday. Um, who was at the accident, I thought it was her and it wasn't. Anyways, um, the other thing is, I hope Bill Bosie's a better ambassador to the Tunisians than he's been to the residents of Dearborn Heights. Think it's kinda funny that he's gonna be an ambassador, an ambassador represents people and bridges a gap, and he's failed to do that here. Um, on a personal note, I hope President Trump doesn't get wind of that, because we might be stuck with him longer. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Alright, anyone else in the audience? Any councilmen back to do this? Alright, how you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, first thing I wanna thank the police officers, uh, for being, uh, police week. And, uh, thank you very much for everything you do. Um, next week is EMS week, um, so I'd like to thank our, uh, fire department who are paramedics, thank E M Ts and paramedics next week. Next week is, um, EMS week. So, um, she stole my thunder, I was gonna talk about, um, um, classes for, um, the department heads, like we were talking about earl- earl- earlier, and my suggestion was, um, you can do a resolution, you can have an next agenda that if you pay for somebody's schooling and they leave within three to five years, they have to pay it all back. Real simple to do, it can just clean up, that way we can retain employees. They don't stay here, get a degree, then move to, uh, other spots.
Thank you.
And, um, one more thing, it rained today, as everybody knows, um, couple of councilmembers have been to my house, and so has Miss, Mr. Dib. Um, I had three panels on my street replaced, two on my side, one on the other side. Um, water still does not run uphill, um, I have puddles that sit there for three, four, or five days until, um, the sun dry, dry, dries them up. They use, it used to drain towards the catch basin, it hasn't drained since they did the, since they did the new concrete two, two years ago, and nothing's been done yet, and last time I brought it up, I don't bring up that often, I think I was here last year bringing it up, and, uh, Mr. Dib said that there was still a contingency being held on that project. I wanna know if that contingency's, if they've been paid all, all, all their money, because if, if I had to pay for that out of my pocket, I would never paid, paid for that crappy job, and I got pictures to prove it, thank you.
Thank you. Shadiv? I'll, I'll let Vince go, then you can finish, go ahead, Vince.
Drop, Council, Columbia Street. Um, I didn't, I really would like you to guys look at the Campfield location, or possibly the location on, um, Warren Avenue there at the Salvation Army. But can't see keeping a building open for three people. If that's all that's working at the Campfield Center, turn it over to the, the fire department, get the fire department built there, if that's their first choice. Um, the space is there, we are the only property. So, make your decisions, let's get her done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience?
Council Chair, just to let Vince know that, um, you know, it is, I think it's the headquarters for our Park and Rec Department, and, uh, also, um, there's the Dearborn Heights Soccer, uh, Club uses that facility for workouts too, so it's, it, it does, it does have some function. But it's very low. Director, he, I mean, he, he could probably speak up at some other time probably, but I mean, uh, I'm sure he has some plans for that, to utilize it.
Regardless, if we can get into the, the fire station
Public safety is more important.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you know, what, like the chief said, I mean, that, it, it's an issue right there by the high school. That's even closer to the high school, that's right next to it.
It's gonna be an issue if it's next to Riverside or if it's next to Crestwood, you know, so either way, you're gonna be dealing with kids. So, take your, take your pick.
Yeah, let's have this discussion real quick. Any other one, anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on the Zoom? I see a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
What's that again? Motion to adjourn by Councilman Saab, second of Councilman Conson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries, have a wonderful day, guys. Have a wonderful day. Sorry. Say no. I have three time points, I just got down my mail pack.